Good afternoon. And welcome to this session of Wilmington City Council's Finance and Economic Development Committee. It is Wednesday, April eighth, two thousand and twenty. First, what I'd like to do is introduction of council members that are present. We have President Hanif Shabazz. We have council member Ilana McCoy of the sixth district. We have council member Linda Gray of the first district. We have council member at large, Reda Walsh. We have council member Bash Turner from the fifth district. And I hope I got everybody, that's my mistake. As you know, the mayor presented his budget on March twentieth for fiscal year two thousand and twenty one. It then becomes council's responsibility to review that budget and to make recommendations. We're going to follow somewhat the same format that we've followed in the past. We will have a brief overview by the Office of Management Budget. Then we'll have some opening remarks from each department head, any presentations they want to make. Then we will get into question and answers. I am asking council members to hold any other questions until we finish their presentation. Some of the things that are a little different, the way we handle things in the past. We're going to have a set time limit for each budget hearing. So today we have three hearings, we're going to hear from the mayor's office, the office of the city treasurer, and city council. Each hearing will be ninety minutes long. We're asking that you keep all your questions, the budgetary matters, any problematic, programmatic or constituent issues, we ask you to address those in other forums, other committee meetings, et cetera. Once we have moved on from a question, we will not return to that question. Any questions that we can't complete, council will have the department response and they can follow up with the, with Michelle or the department director. Anytime during the hearing, council member, the public, public citizens can raise their hand and at the end of this session, we will have a public comment period. Where each constituent will have three minutes to discuss the budget that we have on the agenda. Alright, so setting up those ground rules, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to the Office of Management Budget. One, one other comment. We have been joined by council member Michelle Harley of the fourth district, thank you. O M B?
Certainly. Good afternoon Chairman Freel, President Shabazz, and honorable members of council. Before I begin, I would just like to note that the following budget was finalized before the COVID nineteen crisis began. I will be presenting the budget as it was originally proposed. However, the chief of staff will be discussing any potential modifications to the budget as a result of the novel coronavirus. The mayor's office, exclusive of the Office of Economic Development, is requesting a total F Y two thousand and twenty one budget of six point seven million dollars. Of that amount, five point nine million is in the general fund, six hundred and seventy two thousand is in contingent reserves, and about seventy seven thousand is in the emergency management performance grant fund. The general fund increased by a net one hundred and thirty thousand dollars or two percent over F Y two thousand and twenty. Personal services increased by about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars or nine percent. In part because of a citywide two percent cost of living adjustment for eligible employees, mandatory step increases for non-union classified employees, and annual reviews for executive and managerial employees. In addition, the position of special assistant to the mayor was moved from the Office of Economic Development to the Mayor's Office Administration Division. While this trans, while the transfer of this position contributed approximately one hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars of the two hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase in personal services. It had no cost impact to the department overall, given the offsetting decrease in the Office of Economic Development. M S and E increased by a net eighty five hundred dollars or point six percent. Miscellaneous services in the administration division increased by twenty thousand dollars to help fund the Historically Black Colleges and Universities Week, Martin Luther King Junior Day, and Black History Month celebrations, and other community engagement events. Likewise, an increase of about twenty eight thousand dollars to grants to agencies will help fund community organizations with a focus on education and equity initiatives. Offsetting these increases is a decrease of seventy five thousand dollars in the Office of Emergency Management's overall M S and E budget, which reflects a realignment of budget items to match historical actual spending. Finally, debt service costs decreased by a net one hundred and fifty two thousand dollars due to a reduction in costs associated with a projected debt refinancing. This concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
You don't have to touch me.
Okay, this time, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Tanya Washington, who is the mayor's chief of staff. And I believe she wants to make some overall comments about the fiscal year two thousand and twenty one budget.
Yes, good evening Chairman Freel and all council members. On behalf of Mayor Mike Prizicki and our department directors, thank you for this opportunity to present the F Y twenty one budget. Little did any of us know, as we were preparing the budget in January, that we would be dealing with an extraordinary health and financial crisis by the time it arrived for your review. We're about to begin a budget review process that could raise many more questions than answers at this time. However, we stand ready to work with you and provide you with revised financial information as we learn it. The good news is that council and the administration have worked together over the past few years on some important fiscal matters that will help us in the short term. Council approved the mayor's five-year budget plan in two thousand and seventeen, which resulted in just one tax increase in four years and a stable financial base. I think we would all agree that it is much better to start from a position of strength as we head into a period of real uncertainty. We're going to need everything we've done correctly over the past few years to help us get us through a time when things go very poorly. Initial indications of how COVID nineteen will affect Wilmington's budget outlook are very grim. We could possibly see a reduction in revenue that exceeds our budget reserves for F Y twenty one. We have already asked our directors to make additional expenditure reductions for next, for the next fiscal year. As you know, we rely heavily on wage tax, so as unemployment rises, wage tax revenues falls. Again, we will bring you the best information we have about F Y twenty one revenue and how COVID nineteen is affecting the local economy and just about everything else and everyone else. As the COVID crisis continues to unfold and our revenues take a turn, the administration and city council may very well need to revisit the F Y twenty one operating budget at some later point in time. As Mayor Prizicki stated in his recent State of the City address, we are being tested as a city, state, and nation like we've never been tested before. We're going to have some serious challenges, but we can get through this. Our city employees are doing an excellent job keeping essential city services in place as many more employees are working from home so they can care for their families. If we stay strong, work together, and speak the truth to each other, we can pull through this budget process and keep Wilmington moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, I want to, I want to acknowledge council member Chris Johnson for the, from the seventh district. Ms. Washington, did you have anything else to present, or do you want to just jump into the questions?
We can just go right into the questions.
The, the first question is to discuss the one hundred and sixty thousand increase in the regular salaries account line?
Yes, as Stephanie mentioned earlier, the bulk of that transfer is one full-time employee out of the Office of Economic Development, a special assistant to the mayor. And it was moved into the Mayor's Office Administrative Division. It added approximately ninety two thousand dollars with no net increase to the department overall. Included in that also is mandatory step increases for non-union class, non-union classified employees, and also mandatory annual reviews for executive and managerial staff.
Discuss the plan use, four hundred and ten thousand budgeted community activities, three hundred and seventy eight thousand grants to agency, thirty thousand scholarships.
Okay. On the PowerPoint, on the left-hand side, you will see a list of all of the mayor's major grant awards. Also included in that is funding for ethnic parades and festivals, small grants, ticket sponsorships and scholarships. On the right-hand side of that PowerPoint, you'll see the areas where we reduce the, the allocations, the proposed allocations, and that reduction resulted in a hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars.
Discuss the ninety six thousand budgeted for professional services, there's two parts to that.
Yes. So included in the professional services are lobbyists. That's McCarter Governor, government specialist, and they are lobbyists for thirty six thousand dollars. We also support the Wilmington Community Advisory Council with, we proposed this year with ten thousand dollars. In addition to that, we have our money for our temp agencies, which is our staff that covers the front desk and assist us with office duties as needed.
Discuss the plan use of ninety five thousand budgeted miscellaneous charges. Specify the return on investment for your historical black college university week.
Yeah, this is one of our most successful initiatives, and the bulk of that ninety five thousand dollars is for the H B C U week. Seventy five thousand dollars of that is for H B C U week. And in two thousand and nineteen, we have private contributions of a hundred and eight thousand, and two thousand and twenty, two hundred and twenty thousand. And both of that far exceed what we put out in terms of having that event for the week of Sept, in September. So far, we've had thirty five hundred students participate, twenty six H B C Us at this point, and fifty two representatives from the universities. I think the most notable return on investment is the fact that they've awarded close to four million dollars in scholarships. We've had twelve hundred students that got accepted on the spot, three hundred and fifty seven that received partial scholarships, sixty three that were offered a full ride, and four hundred and twenty scholarships awarded in total. So you can see from two thousand and seventeen, we started out with eleven H B C Us participating, and now we're up to twenty six in two thousand and nineteen. It's just a picture. And so to cap off the H B C U week, we always have a battle of the bands. And over the years, we've had six hundred band members from eight, four H B C Us. And the competition included North Carolina A and T, Lincoln, Hampton University, Winston-Salem University. And the residual effect of all that is that the band members, they occupy hotel rooms and they patronize our Wilmington restaurants. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but now H B C U week has garnered national media attention. And we have seven media outlets, local, national, international media at a city for the city of Wilmington. The lead media outlet is ESPN. And they too, when they come to town, their, their members, they contribute to the local economy as well and frequent our hotels and restaurants and transportation. So it's been very, a big success for us. And this is a list of all the media outlets.
I just wanted to acknowledge that we've been joined by council member Cynthia Oliver from the third district, and council, council member Ashima Dixon, council at large. Specify city leverages with, discuss the sixty five thousand budgeted for advertising and talk a little bit how we leverage that, those dollars.
Okay, so of that sixty five thousand dollars, we have thirty that's allocated for radio market campaign, digital promotion, Out and About Magazine, we put some funding in there for the promotion of the U S Census. And lastly, we have forty thousand dollars allocated for the It's Time Wilmington campaign. And, you know, since I've been here, that's one of our most successful marketing campaigns yet. And it's garnered eight hundred and thirty two thousand dollars from the private sector and five hundred thousand dollars from the state of Delaware. So the forty thousand dollars that we allocate is, is a good investment. And there was, there were no questions associated with this last slide. However, I did want you to see the areas where we made additional reductions in the area of travel, furniture, food, business meetings, and consultants and registration. And we reduced it by forty, forty two thousand dollars, six hundred, forty two thousand, six hundred dollars.
What was the total reduction in the mayor's office budget?
Over two hundred thousand dollars.
All right, we have a couple of questions for the Office of Cultural Affairs. Do you be answering those questions?
Tina Betts, Tina, is she on here? She was on here.
Yeah, so I'm here.
Yeah, so I'm going to turn over to our Director of Culture Affairs, Tina Betts, and she'll answer your questions.
Good evening Chairman Freel and members of council.
Could you discuss the plan use of one hundred and seventy six thousand budgeted for consultants, there's two parts to that question?
Yeah, I believe that we've had a reduction in that number, I'm not sure Stephanie and Tanny may be able to confirm that, no, okay.
Yeah, we reduced it to a hundred and fifty thousand. Yeah.
Yeah, we, we support, we contract on an as needed, as needed basis. And examples for our independent contractors and businesses include production coordinators and stage managers for all of our large-scale events. This, this year, for the late part of this year and going into all of next year, we will have a summer apprenticeship program, teaching and guest artists. And we also, with the redo of the Reading Gallery, will be using the services of an exhibit, of an exhibit installation consultant. So those are the types of examples of consultants that we've used in the past. The amount of time, before I get to that, a lot of our consultant are actual artists, for example, the Jazz Festival artists are considered consultants because we hire them on an independent contractual basis when they come in to perform. We negotiate our contracts based on whatever services are needed and are provided by the independent contractors and the length of time that is required to complete the agreed-upon services. Okay, some examples of the contracted independent contractors in the past have been our Wilmington Children's Chorus Manager of Operations, the artistic director for the Wilmington Children's Chorus, help with support for our art loop project and marketing coordination for that program. And something that is new, again, late in the, in this, this fiscal year, but will continue into next fiscal year, is a program director for the Arts Work Summer Youth Apprenticeship Program that will take place over the artist, Urban Artist Exchange. That's the new project over at Sixteenth and Walnut Street. We also will be using for the late part of this year of some of these, the funds for this fiscal year, but going into next fiscal year also for our Arts Work Summer Youth Apprenticeship Teaching Artists. And yeah, so that's, that's the plan. Most of our consultants are the answer, if you want me to go on to the D B Es. Yeah, most of our consultants are contracted, they are practicing artists, they're arts educators, or they're service providers to the, to arts-related industry, in the arts-related industry. So many of these individuals and small businesses easily qualify as the, the E's because in the, in, in the arts industry, you, you fit very, very easily into that, into that area, either officially or not, or unofficially. If we, many of our contractors are female, and I think that that's by nature of the arts industry, and we are very, we are very attuned to making sure that we hire in a very diverse way also. Paramount to our decision to use consultants is their special area of expertise, their experience, and their knowledge, and this is especially important for our large-scale events. Safety is extremely important, so we want to make sure that the people and businesses that we use have, we have worked with before in many cases, so we know we have a track record with them. And also, they, this is what they do in a way that is, that's respected in the industry.
Okay. Discuss the budgetary plan used for one hundred and sixty five thousand requested miscellaneous projects.
So for F Y twenty one, we have the Clifford Brown Jazz Festival, Riverfront Blues Festival, Fourth of July Celebration, Music of Market Street, our Reading Gallery, as we continue to explore ways to make that an impactful presence in our city county building. And the Arts Work Summer Youth Apprenticeship Program that will be happening again in twenty one over at the Urban Artist Exchange. And also seasonal, early spring to late fall, arts education and workshops and programs that will be multi-generational. For F Y twenty one, the Riverfront Blues Festival happens in August, July fourth, of course, on July fourth. And those two events are subject to postponement or cancellation for F Y twenty one. They have already happened in F Y twenty. And this is just one photo, a couple of photos of the Jazz Festival that shows, first of all, the impact with the, you know, the people who have been attending. This two thousand and twenty would have been the thirty-third year for the Jazz Festival, and many of the people who attend do come from out of town, so in addition to a community celebration, this also has a very robust economic impact, especially heads and beds. And a couple of time, a couple of times I've mentioned the Urban Artist Exchange, and these are artist renderings. These are some of their first artists and renderings, there have been some changes in the aesthetics, but this would give everybody an idea of what the, what these transformed stables and the surrounding grounds will look like. There's also a planned amphitheater that will happen down towards Clifford Brown Walk. And if things go as we hope that they go, as we, as we are planning that they go, the amphitheater should be up and running by next spring. Spring of two thousand and twenty one.
Council member Harley, you have a question?
Hi, can you hear me Councilman Freel?
Yes, I can.
Oh, okay. Good evening Tina, I'm, my question is regarding the communication that the mayor sent out recently about permits, you know, being canceled. And I was just curious if we were going to definitely have the Clifford Brown Jazz Festival?
Nothing is definite because we're looking at what's happening, you know, with this pandemic on a daily basis. But the, the high hope is to have this in the fall. So it would be the, the, the F Y twenty Clifford Brown Jazz Festival that we're looking to have in the fall. And then, of course, hopefully next, next June, we won't be faced with the issues that we're having, we'll be back to June of twenty one. So the plan is, is to, to have the festival in the fall.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay. Discuss the plan use of one hundred and seven thousand budgeted between printing and advertising and rentals?
What we found is that the way to reach folks locally is by, is by hand, hand-to-hand delivery of information. And so we have ramped up our print effort, our, our printing so that we can do flyers to get actually into the hands of, of people in the community. We've had an excellent track record of reaching people internationally and nationally for our large-scale events like the Clifford Brown Jazz Festival and the Riverfront Blues Festival. So we're looking at to be more successful at, at notifying our local residents through media outlets, local radio, social media, we're really boosting that up. Digital advertising, we know that a lot of people are getting information digitally nowadays. So we are asking for the same level of funding for F Y twenty one as we had in place for F Y twenty. There's no increase being asked for that. In addition to that, we're adding the Arts Work Summer Youth Apprenticeship Program. Our recruiting efforts for that, again, going out hand-to-hand and going into the neighborhoods. And also letting our neighborhood, especially the east side of Wilmington, you know, although if you read our effort to get information out about artworks in the Urban Artist Exchange will be citywide, we are initially starting with the east side, be, you know, extremely focused there, and then hoping that has a ripple effect out into the neighborhood. So we will again be using a lot of print and social media to, to reach our local communities in a much more successful way.
We have a question by council member Bash Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Betts, is it possible that you can give us the, the amount that was allotted for the Jazz Fest for F Y two thousand and twenty? Everything that's, that's as far as advertising, the money that we allotted for the whole project, since we're planning on moving it to, to the fall possibly? What was the budgeted amount of money that was allotted to that?
About twenty, about twenty-two to twenty-three thousand dollars. Now remember that we would, the, the funds that would be used to promote the Jazz Festival in the fall would actually be F Y twenty funds, not F Y twenty-one funds. So we would need to figure out how to, to, to use the money in, in the fall that was allotted in F Y twenty. I hope that answers your question.
That was my question, my question was, for our current budget, how much money do we allot in our current budget, which is F Y two thousand and twenty, for this come, up-and-coming Jazz Fest that we're now going to offset possibly to the fall? What was the money that we allotted far as the whole event, promoting it, advertisement, everything included for the Jazz Fest? What was the money that we allotted in this current budget?
About twenty-three thousand dollars.
So only twenty-three thousand for performers, everything that we allotted to the budget?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about advertising only.
Every, every, I mean, you'll have to answer it now, but if you get all those numbers for everything that was included, that will, we will be paying for an event if we were having it in June.
Okay, this would be just for the Jazz Festival, council member?
Yeah, Jazz Festival and all, all events that we have in the pipeline that might be pushed back to the fall or canceled if we're extended in, in the COVID nineteen.
Okay, and yes, I can do that, and just, just remember that the, the money that's been allotted for the Jazz Festival and F Y twenty would still be spent for the Jazz Festival if it's held in the fall.
Right.
It would not be F Y twenty-one money.
Correct, and, and the reason I ask that as well is because us as council members, or we, all of us have a tough situation with COVID. If there's an opportunity. If there's an opportunity that we can kind of, uh, put that money somewhere else at this time that's needed, right? And, and we can kind of discuss that as well. So that's part of the reason I'm asking that.
Okay, sure, that's fine. If we use, if we use the money that's been allotted for the Jazz Festival and FY twenty prior to having the event in the fall, then we would not have the money to have the event in the fall.
Well, we can, we can also amend, amend twenty, twenty twenty-one, that's why I said that, but thank you.
Okay, gotcha. All right, thank you.
And Councilmember Turner, we discussed very early on that there might be, there's a very good chance, in fact, that we will be revisiting the twenty-one budget sometime, sometime in the fall, probably this year. Okay. I think, Tina, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We have a question for the Office of Constituent Services. Is Ms. Prado with us?
Yes, good evening, Councilman Freo and members of council.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Discuss the planned use of seventy thousand budgeted in contracted maintenance services account line?
Yes, that's used for graffiti removal.
Go ahead.
No, I was gonna, this, um, for the graffiti for the last two fiscal years. In fiscal year eighteen, we removed twenty-three thousand six hundred and ninety-eight square feet. Fiscal year nineteen, we did fifteen thousand nine hundred and four square feet. And so far in fiscal year twenty, which currently we've only been billed through December, we've removed three thousand five hundred and thirty-two square feet.
What was in your budget for twenty?
Twenty was seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand, and this eleven-nine is only through December?
Yes.
Have you been doing? Have you been doing other work since then?
Yes, typically in the winter months, they bill, um, the bills don't come in as, as they do in the spring, it'll come monthly, but due to the temperatures, there's not as much removal going on, so they don't bill us as frequently.
All right, the last question is, all council members should get a copy of the mayor's organizational chart. All right, are there other questions from council members at this time? Not seeing it. Sorry, Councilmember Sheema Dixon?
Um, thank you, Councilman Freo. I just had a, a, a question regarding, I know, just to, just for clarity, the, for Chief of Staff, the Assistant, Special Assistant position that's being moved to the, um, to the mayor's office was previously the, was that the same as the Employment Specialist position?
Yes, it was. Yes, it was, and the title changed, now it's the Special Assistant to the Mayor, and the person is actually housed in the mayor's office.
Okay, thank you. And then, are there going to be any other changes to the, the grants to agencies that you foresee for the one, the grant that you already went over, Chief of Staff?
I mean, there could possibly be, I mean, you know, it depends on, you know, we're going to go through this process, and there may be some changes when we get to the end of the budget, we may make further reductions. I hope that we don't have to, but that's a good possibility. I can't guarantee that we won't.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions, Councilman Freo.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions from council members?
Councilman Turner?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Chair. Yeah, can you, uh, can you also, Chief of Staff, can you tell us the money that's, the total money to set, set aside for coronavirus assistance? I'm gonna ask numerous questions, you can answer them, just get the questions out the way. Money set aside for coronavirus assistance. Also, the amount of money that the city has spent from the lawsuits, particularly the lawsuits of the mayor's office. Additionally, the liability picked up from the mayor from taking control of the Wilmington Housing Partnership?
Let me just take it from the, the lawsuits. That question will probably be addressed when we get to the city solicitor's budget presentation. I don't have that information in front of me, but they, that's the likely place that you'll get the, the answer that you need. In terms of the coronavirus, are you asking, did we budget for it? Because we didn't budget for it, but we've been spending money related to the COVID nineteen, and it's our intention that we will get reimbursed by the federal government, or maybe some monies from the state.
Can you, um, can you provide, if not today, provide how much money, um, we have, we have provided so far spent on the COVID nineteen? And how much money are we planning on getting, um, far as anything that we spent down from, from federal or state assistance?
Um, I, I might not can give you the answer on how much we plan on getting, because we haven't finished this, this is a, you know, this, we're in the middle of a pandemic, so we're going to continue to spend down. I can tell you that I have forwarded over grant applications to our police department for them to recover money related to their overtime in regards to COVID. I have had the, um, Finance Department create general ledger accounts which capture COVID expenses for personnel and material supplies and equipment. But right now, it's really in its early, it's infant stages of spending.
And any, any liability, any liabilities that we picked up from the mayor taking control of W H P?
Not that I'm aware of.
If possible, once the solicitor has, has his time to, uh, to share, if he can get those answers, uh, that pertain to legal.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, and any other questions at this time from council members? All right, I'm not seeing it, I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson?
Did you have a question? Chairman Freo, yes, I just had a brief question for Chief of Staff. I'm, I'm looking at the HBCU line, and I, I obviously, I'm looking at the, the trend and the program's grown. Has there been any thoughts by administration possibly breaking this out from the mayor's office? Maybe creating a five-on-one C three or some other organization so that it can almost be its own offshoot?
Yes, there actually has been discussion about that, and, um, if everything, if we get back to some point of normalcy, and as we continue to move forward in September with the HBCU Week, we've had some offers from some corporate corporations to actually sponsor it in total. And once that happens, a five-on-one, well, prior to that happening, they're in the process of creating a five-on-one C three as we speak, actually.
Okay, thank you. I was just looking, you know, again, I, this would be year four, and it seems like it's, you know, i- i- it's getting bigger than government can handle. So if a nonprofit entity or some other organization can, can, can handle it, I, I think that may be going forward, be the prudent move. So thank you for the update on that.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other, uh.
Councilman Turner?
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Turner.
So, goo- good, good question, Councilman Johnson. So, so we're going to, we're looking at nonprofit to take over this arm, but originally, originally, wasn't this a part of a nonprofit that we partnered with? Where is that nonprofit, where is that nonprofit now? And why are we, why do we assist with partnering with that nonprofit to now, as it gotten bigger a little bit, we, we turn it over to another nonprofit? Why, why don't we bring that other nonprofit, um, back on? And I think that's the, I, I don't know, uh, Chief of Staff, you might get speak on it, I think you're a part of that board of that, that existed nonprofit, if I'm not mistaken?
No, we, we didn't partner officially, I mean, we, we had, we worked with, uh, I think you're talking about the HBCU Coalition of Delaware. So we were never a part, we were never a formal partner with them. This has always been initiative of the mayor's office, and it has grown exponentially. And there's been discussion that, uh, Ashley and Earl, who had this up, uh, are in the process of creating a five-on-one C three for it. The only nonprofit affiliation it has is that when we go to raise funds for this event, it did go through City Fest.
So Steve Washington wasn't a part of the first one in his organization? I think you were Vice, Vice President on that.
No, no, he was not. We invited him to events, and we worked with him, but we were never an official partner with him.
So, so knowing that we do have an, an agency that's, that's a city-grown agency, are we thinking about somehow, uh, letting them be at the table, uh, with, with all these discussions, since they did do groundwork with a lot of these, uh, HBCUs?
It's a different model altogether. The HBCU Coalition of Delaware raises funds and then distributes them. This HBCU Week, we allow the, um, the corporations to, and the, um, the university themselves, they provide the awards. So there's no pass-through of the tuition awards, it goes directly to the universities. It's a different model altogether.
I would, I would love for us to see if we can get all the models together and, and have them work together, collaboration, empowering. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Hey, thank you very much. Any other questions this time from council members? All right, I'm not seeing any. Is there anyone from the public that wanted to make comments this afternoon? I'm not seeing any. Am I correct? Okay, well, this will conclude this budget hearing with the Office of the Mayor. I appreciate all you folks coming and answering our questions. We are going to recess now until five forty-five, and at that time, we will hear from the City Treasurer's Office. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council members.
Thank you.
Thank you, council members.
Good afternoon, and welcome back to this session of Wilmington City Council's Finance and Economic Development Committee. It is Wednesday, April eighth, twenty twenty. And February, on March twentieth, the mayor presented his fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. We are in the midst of our first day of budget hearings. Earlier, we heard from the mayor's office, and shortly, we're going to hear from the City Treasurer's Office. First, I'd like to acknowledge the council members that are joining us. We have Santi Haller from the third district, Yolanda McCloy from the sixth district, Bash Turner from the fifth district, Trippie Congo from the second district, Michelle Harley from the fourth district, Loretta Walsh at large, Linda Gray, first district, and our president, Anitha Shabazz. I hope I, uh, I got everybody on there. I'm sorry, and Chris Johnson from the seventh district. Just quickly, we'll have an overview from the Office of Management and Budget. Then I will turn it over to our City Treasurer, Elder Jones Potter, for any kind of introductions or opening remarks she would like to make, and then we will get into the question and answer period. We've, we've submitted some questions to the department, and they will be bearing us with responses. And I'm sure we'll have some questions from council members also. Just some changes that we made in the format this year. The budget hearings today are allotted ninety minutes. I'm asking that all council members keep their questions to budgetary matters. Any programmatic or constituent issues should be addressed in another forum, in other budget meetings, et cetera. Once we have moved ahead of a question, we won't return back to that question, council members will have to follow up on their own. If time runs out, any questions that we can't complete, council will have the department response, and they can follow up with our Chief of Staff, Michelle Bassnight, or the Department of Directors. At any time during the hearing, members of the public can sign up for public comments, and we will, uh, we will allot time at the end, so individuals can speak for three minutes, and they need to speak on the, uh, on the agenda that we're working on, in this case, the City Treasurer's Office. So at this time, I'm going to talk, to turn it over to the representative from the Office of Management and Budget. We have someone from the Office of Management and Budget.
George, hey, what is Mike?
Yes, can you turn your mic on, George?
It's on. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairman Freo, President Shabazz, and Honorable Members of City Council. I would like to present the Treasurer's Office FY twenty twenty-one proposed budget. On behalf, on behalf of Office of Management and Budget, funding for the Treasurer's Office is derived from the General Fund and all of the pension funds. The pension funds represent over ninety-two percent, or five points six million dollars. And the General Fund is less than eight percent, or four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars of the total budget. The department budget request is over six point zero eight million dollars, which represent a seven point five percent, or four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over the FY twenty twenty budget. Personal services across all funds increase in total by thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Quiet regular salaries across all funds rose by five thousand wider than thirty dollars due to employee anniversary step increases, and a proposed two percent cooler for non-appointed positions. Temporary salaries increased by five thousand dollars in the pension funds to assist in departmental duties, such as records management, reconciliations, and cash flow analysis and projections. Printing and advertising in the General Fund increased by five thousand dollars to assist in public communications. Total professional fees across all funds increased by one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, or sixteen point one percent. Consultant costs for the Biennia Pension Healthcare Valuation grew by fifty-five thousand dollars. Quiet trustee fees, based on projected value of all funds managed, was increased by ninety-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. The, the annual self-insurance target for the retiree medical costs in the Pension Healthcare Fund was increased by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, bringing the total funding for the program to four million dollars for FY twenty twenty-one. This concludes my presentation of the Treasurer's Office FY twenty twenty-one proposed budget. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, George. We appreciate it. Uh, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to our City Treasurer, Velda Jones Potter, for any introductory introductory remarks that she would like to make. Uh, and then we will get into the question and answers. Ms. Potter?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, uh, Councilman Freo and to all the members of council for the opportunity for the Office of the City Treasurer to present our budget for 2021. Uh, before starting, um, with our presentation of our budget, I just want to express my very deep, uh, concern and, um, compassion for all the people across our great city who are experiencing, as we all are to some degree, the effects of this very devastating, uh, co-coronavirus. Um, clearly, there are those who are affected even more than others. And I particularly express concern for those who have, um, experienced directly either themselves or members of their family, being affected, uh, from from a health standpoint directly, um, or, uh, God forbid, loss of life. Um, it is something that we in this city, in this state, in this country, in this world have never experienced before. And, um, what continues to give me hope is that we do see people rallying together and supporting one another. And so for our great city, I'm hopeful that as we continue to support all of those in our city who are in need, that, um, we do what we can as we reconfigure, revisit our budgets to, um, make funds available to support those, especially in our most vulnerable communities. Um, with that, I would like to, um, just give a couple of, of brief comments as to what our focus is and what our vision, our values, our mission, what we try to, uh, live by um, day in and day out, uh, week to week, month to month, in the Treasurer's Office in service to, uh, the constituents, um, of the city who've entrusted, um, the fiscal health of the city, uh, to to myself and my team. Um, our focus is on maintaining effective monetary policy that maximizes the city's value and meets the needs of Wilmington taxpayers. And so it is striking that balance of 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 creating the highest value possible of for the city and maximizing our resources and our use of funds so that the needs of taxpayers can best be met by the services that, um, our executive, uh, offices and operations provide to our citizens. The principles that we live by as we strive to do that are stewardship, transparency, equity, and prudence. Our vision for, uh, for our office is to bolster the economic return on the city's financial resources, promote financial literacy through transformed fiscal stewardship and operational excellence. Since taking office, I have been very focused on driving, uh, fiscal stewardship and operational excellence as a core value of the City Treasurer's Office and, um, seeking to have an an impact in that same regard across, uh, the city in all aspects that have a financial impact. Our areas of focus in my office are in cash management, investing, financing, and the pension fund system and fund management. We will, uh, review today myself and with me, who you will hear from next and first to answer the first several questions is the Deputy City Treasurer, Mary McDermott. Uh, Mary is a, um, long service, uh, employee of the City of Wilmington and the Treasurer's Office. And, um, I am excited to have her continuing to serve with me, um, as a deputy in the office. I also want to take this opportunity to, uh, express my gratitude for the other members of my team. Um, we are a small team. And and yet frankly, I feel very, um, proud frankly of the accomplishments that we've made in all the areas across our office. And so as you hear our responses to the questions of budget today, um, you will also hear a sprinkling of some of the things we've, uh, been able to accomplish um, with the resources that council makes available to us. And, uh, with that, I will, uh, turn it back over to Councilman Freo.
Uh, first of all, thank you, uh, City Treasurer Potter, for your introductory remarks. I think we all share, share your sentiment. Um, at this time, we'll go ahead and jump into the questions. The first question is considering the recent fluctuations of the financial markets, and that's putting it mildly. Uh, share the safeguards that are in place to best protect the city's financial investments. And there's a couple of parts to that question.
Yes, uh, good afternoon or good evening, Mr. Chairman, President Shabazz, and members of council. This is Mary McDermott. I want to make sure you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. All right, yes, as you said, it the the answers provided in the, um, the two sub-answers basically, the first one being specify the health of the city's pension funds. Um, the pension funds have an investment policy and guidelines that we, uh, adhere strictly to, and they're in place to employ diversification for the funds and guard against any speculative investing. We're we're fairly conservative or or maybe considerably more conservative than than some other system pension systems. But it has served us well, especially in this current environment. Um, so we split our investments among various asset classes, stocks and bonds, uh, international global stocks, real estate, um, and then some index funds. And that protects the different various, the different asset classes as, um, each various market environment. In other words, you can do poorly in bonds and then your stocks will make up for it on the other side and vice versa. So we're we're very diverse, which has served us, uh, well in the past. Another sign of the city's, uh, pension fund health would be the fact that the city contributes 100% each year of the actuarially determined contribution, which keeps the plans on track to be fully funded in our case by 2029. But there are many governments that don't fund at all or just fund a fraction. And, uh, you know, their funding levels show the result of that. But we do always get very good grades from the rating agencies for employing this, um, 100% funding. It's it it speaks well for the city of Wilmington. And, uh, funding ratios, as I mentioned, they're they're another measure of the health of the plans. And so I looked at the results of the valuations from, uh, 2010 through 2018. We do them biannually, so 2018 was the last one. And they've really trended upward. The non-uniform plans have increased from a 51% funding to 60%. And the non-uniform have gone from 60% to 76%. So all all that improves the health of the plans and should give, uh, our employees and retirees some comfort. And to one or one B. Similarly, on the, um, on the general fund monies and capital investments and things, we have a a pretty strict investment policy that offered authorizes, um, limited investment options. Um, we primarily stick with fully collateralized CDs with the, uh, various banks. We get bids for the best, um, rate, et cetera. But, um, we we do not do any speculative or any derivatives or any kind of, anything that can't be cashed out right away and put right to you should we ever find ourselves in the, um, in that, uh, situation. And as Velda mentioned, the 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 COVID-19, COVID-19, which is affecting the world, um, we've seen recent market downturn due to results of that. And our focus has mainly been on liquidity. Um, we've liquidated a couple CDs recently just to make sure we boost the cash balance. And in looking for rates, they're just about at zero. So the concern right now, you know, isn't necessarily in in any interest you're going to make on these investments because it's almost non-existent. So there's no, um, downside to say boosting your cash balance.
Okay. Discuss the current amount of cash on hand and the amount of cash on hand at the same time last year.
Okay. Currently have 60.3 million on hand and last this year compared compared with 68.3 last year. Um, the, I mentioned the $10 million that is out there available for reimbursement um, for from capital expenditures that had already been paid out of the general. But we're not in a position right now of needing a lot more cash. So rather than say drawing down on the band, which would then force us to pay interest, you know, we're going to time that and and take, take that or withdraw that when when we actually need the cash. Uh, right now, we are owed approximately that amount between that and the CDs that are outstanding, but that the, um, city's finance department has paid many invoices over the past couple of months that we have not reimbursed the general for yet. But we will when that, um, that due date comes, which is not till May for those CDs to mature. Um, restricted cash, there's much less this year, which is very good. We have 26.9 million compared to 50 million last year. And if you recall, last year, we had a large sum of prior bond issue cash that just was sitting in investments and not being utilized. And the past year, the city's done a good job of spending down that, uh, capital money. And these are for bond issues between 1997 and 2018. So actually, the fact that we don't have as much cash in that, um, category is is a good thing. And so we will boot, we will get more when we go to the bond market next. But as of now, this is what's available from old bond issues.
Okay, that's my understanding. At the next council meeting, uh, we will have introduction of the ordinance, um, to give the City Treasurer access to budget reserves. We do have a cash shortfall. Which I think we've done, gosh, probably last seven, 10, 11 years, even though many years we didn't have, didn't have access to dollars.
Right.
Okay. Um, discuss the self-insurance funding target for retiree medical costs. Budget at $4 million up $250,000 over the prior year's budget.
Um, we have done this for many years now. $250,000 per year was what the our pension board authorized in order for us to eventually get to the point where we are contributing the full actuarially determined contribution in the OPEB or Retiree Medical Fund, uh, to to mirror what we do in the pension funds. The plan was first, uh, rolled out, I believe, in 2001. And about a year later, we did our first valuation and I I think the minimum contribution came back at that time at about $4 million. And and that was just way too much for this, for the city to to contribute at the time. So I think since then, every year, um, we've boosted that by 250,000. And I think it's important to note that, um, this coming years budget, the amount we should be budgeting to fully fund would be 4.3 and we're at 4. million. So we're we're hitting the point where this phase out is going to end. I'd say within the next year or two. And we are having a valuation done again this, um, fall by the actuary. So we should know more by the end of the year. But that's my hope is that we're very near the end of this.
Okay. Uh, discuss the 1.1 million budgeted professional services for us both the general and pension funds up 155,000.
Is that you, Velda?
Uh, no, that's that's yours, Mary.
Okay. Okay. Well, uh, you can see the chart there with the, um, comparison of last year to this year. The actuary, as I just mentioned, we have an actuarial valuation this year coming up. So if you can see prior years, you'll see every other year that consultant's line goes up and then comes back down the following year by whatever the cost of the valuation is. So this year, um, between the OPEB funds and the pensions, it's estimated to be approximately $70,000 for for both of those, um, valuations. And we employ, uh, the pension funds employ a an investment consultant. And he, their firm are actually the ones that, um, guide us on the investment strategies and disciplines, manager performance and rebalancing. And I talked about the, um, importance of diversification in the first question. And this, uh, we've been with this company for several years and they've, um, served us well as far as making sure we rebalance at the right time so that we don't miss an opportunity or give up an opportunity. And they present to the board quarterly and keep everyone up to date. Um, another part of those professional fees is trustee fees. These are paid to each of our active pension managers. We have, um, eight managers. We also have index funds which aren't considered actively managed. But, uh, that their their fee is based on their performance. So if they're, um, if the amount under investment goes up, the so in turn does the fee. Um, now, I have to say, we made this budget after the end of, uh, December 19, when we had such an incredible year, the calendar year 19, our return was almost 20% in the pension funds. Not seeing what was coming down the road. So we haven't still seen the full impact on the market of this, um, virus. And this, whatever happens will directly impact these fees. So having prepared this when, you know, I certainly wasn't considering, um, another 20% year, but our balances were considerably high. And we like to, um, presume a 7.2% return. So we factored that in and and estimated the fees. I do not think they will be that high ultimately unless something dramatic comes about and the market soars. I I I, it's just too soon to predict. I haven't even gotten March's numbers yet. So that's just out there for people to to know and understand. And then there was a question, oh, there's one other line here. Accounting, uh, we have 16, eight, I think, in the accounting line. And that is to pay for police and fire pension secretary. police and fire pension secretaries. They are required by code. And so, you know, they basically they interview people when they go off on pension or spouses, if they lose a pensioner and, and have to set the spouse up on as a pensioner, whatever. The one question that was asked were, are any of our investment managers or consultants DBEs? And from the pension side, we have eight managers, as I mentioned, two of which are DBE. So that's twenty five percent. Which I think is good. And they're, they're two of, of our better performing managers. Also, at least the one is, is an excellent manager and we've had him them since the nineties. That's
Discuss the plan use of twenty six thousand budget community activities pertaining to community services and grants to agencies.
Okay, I will speak to that one. Um, I want to really thank members of council for supporting our community engagement initiative. It was a very new initiative introduced under my leadership when, when I first took office. And I think we have seen outstanding results in helping to educate and empower the community around economic and financial matters. On our, our budget for both the combined grants to agencies and community services is twenty six thousand dollars. Um, and we have utilized those funds in support of organizations in the community and events in the community on the grants to agencies side with awarding twelve nonprofits, all of whom are five oh one C three agencies. Grants that supported their work that aligns with ours around financial education, home ownership and foreclosure prevention. Youth scholarships. And if you do the math, you'll, you'll note that the average grant or support to an agency is less than five hundred dollars. And so we're very mindful of of public funds and how important it is to to put it to work in places where it's able to, to make a difference for those people in the community. We had three, what I would call signature programs this year. And one of those is the Smart Savers program, which I have shared with members of council and I, I believe many of you may be familiar with now. This is, this past year was our third year of the Smart Savers Initiative. And it, it expanded by leaps and bounds in the, the range of young people and the variety of organizations that took advantage of the Smart Savers workshop that we offer. We partnered with organizations across the city from the neighborhood house to Delaware Futures to sororities and, and the like to deliver financial literacy to young people ages eight to seventeen all through, all across our city. We continue to partner with Del One and D Crack in that initiative and introducing many young people to their first banking relationship. And we held the Smart Savers Bash in collaboration with the Delaware Historical Society where they gave us the entire use of their entire building for a full day and we had a complete workshop. For all of those young people who also got an opportunity to, to explore and learn history of our city and to come to appreciate the rich facility that there is right there downtown in the Delaware Historical Society. The social security seminar is an annual offering that we make available, not only to city employees, but we also have many from the community at large who attend, who are approaching and planning for retirement age and want to understand, need to understand a social security system better. On this year, we had the real benefit of introducing a very new effort in a financial ethics seminar, um, which we did in collaboration and partnership with a number of other entities across our city and our state, frankly. D Crack again was a partner with us. The Delaware State Treasurer, Newcastle County Council and the, the president of Newcastle County Council in particular was, was very, very supportive. And Newcastle County Executive along with DelCOG. We brought to the city a renowned professor and forensic accountant named Dr. Kelly Richmond Pope from Chicago. And she was the author and producer of a film titled All the Queen's Horses. And it was attended by upwards of, of three hundred people from the community who had an opportunity to, to learn and hear and gain insight about how important it is to, to have transparency in government and the, the risks and pitfalls that a community or municipality can experience when that, that is not the case. And so we want to thank those partners as, as well again as council for continuing to support our ability to educate and engage the community in those ways.
Okay. One more question. Discuss the thirty nine thousand allocated for temporary salaries.
Um, the thirty nine thousand dollar request for temporary salaries is consistent with the level of temporary support that has been helpful and very value additive to the, to our office over the last two years. Um, ours is a very small office. And most of what we do is very mission critical. And and so what, what we observed had been the case over the years is it became very difficult to to do analysis and, and strategy and planning to do process improvement and to implement new innovative forward looking things and even frankly, to do just very basic fundamental documentation and review of policies and procedures to ensure internal controls are maintained. And so the temporary salaries is used to help support our ability to do those sorts of things in the organization. Thirty three thousand dollars of that is requested or budgeted in the pension division. And it would support maintenance of pension data files and record retention. Um, the verification of pension benefit recipients, which is a very key and critical control process that we put in place to ensure that that we are verifying that pensioners who are, are receiving benefit payments are frankly, still alive, that no one has intercepted those payments. Um, and that, you know, there's no risk in overpaying when, when it's time and appropriate to discontinue payments to pensioners. The Police and Fire Pension Plan Administration, which Mary referenced there being a police pension secretary and a fire pension secretary, both of whom serve very important roles in each of their respective organizations. From the standpoint of there being a liaison with those uniformed organizations that both uniformed employees of the city as well as their families trust as they're kind of managing through this important transition in their lives and this important process. However, their first responsibility, of course, is to the public safety, to fight fires, to you know, to prevent crime. And, and so we oftentimes support and assist in the administration and administrative support that, that they might otherwise be giving to to their pension, pensioners and their pension families. And then we continue, we have made great progress in the review documentation of policies and procedures. And in so doing, we have been able to put in place many control improvements, many efficiency upgrades within our processes. Improved forms and, and communications that are easier for employees and plan participants to use. And the temporary salaries will be used to help us maintain the kind of capacity and temporary support that can allow us to continue to do that work. And then likewise, a much smaller commitment of funds on the administrative division, six thousand dollars. And frankly, that has been going down because as we have made improvements, made progress with developing and documenting our procedures. We've been, you know, we've been able to, to manage downward that need. And so that will allow us to, to maintain that capacity at the level that we still needed for complete keeping those activities going.
Okay. And then the, the last question is the same for all departments. We ask them to provide an organizational chart that council members can look at leisure. At this time, are there any questions from council members for the, for the city treasurer? I don't see your name. Council member Harley. Do you have a question? Hello?
I'm sorry.
Yes, we can.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Councilman Frio. Thank you, Mary and Treasurer Potter for a great presentation. My question is this. Due to the virus, we know that there are a lot of people that are working from home. And my question is one. When do we receive payments from the businesses? Is it on a monthly basis or quarterly basis for the wage taxes that they pay towards the city?
Um, that, that question is really one that falls into the finance director's role in, in the receipt of you know, actually when those come in.
Oh, okay. Okay. That's fine. So I'll, I'll direct my questions to the, I was just trying to connect the dots in terms of impact. You know, with the virus and all.
What I will say though is the, 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 the timing of when those come when all of the inflows of revenues into the city come certainly does affect our cash and liquidity position. And there is a, a cyclical nature to, to some of the different inflows of revenues. For example, net profits come in in April, wage tax come in on a, a more of a monthly basis. And and I think as Councilman Frill referenced, we typically every year as a sort of a safeguard request of council, the approval to access the, the budget reserve and the that, that some of those cyclical cycles of cash flow should find us in a tight cash position at any moment in time. We have not had to actually access those funds for a number of years. I want to say it's maybe in maybe back as far as twenty twelve. And so it's, it's been a precaution. But typically we've as we forecast the, the need for cash. Although we've typically gotten that approval as a precaution, we've even gone into it knowing that it didn't seem very likely that we would need to access it. That is not the case today as, as you recognize with the COVID nineteen and the effect that that is having on on everything, on, on businesses and individuals and how they're going to be able to to pay the city. We are working with the finance department to, to understand how they are envisioning their projections to change. And, and, and translating that into how that's going to affect our cash and liquidity position. And, um, and try and preparing for that on the front end. And so the, the legislation requesting access to the budget reserve is, is one piece of that. We have also working with Councilman Guy and made a request for and through an ordinance to potentially access a tax and revenue anticipation note. Would be similar to a line of credit, if you will. Liking it to what someone may may look to do in their personal life at a time like this. To have just that access to, to that cash in the event that it's needed. So that the critical services of the city So that the critical services of the city, salaries for city employees. Keep the lights on.
Right.
For that matter, all of those services of the city can be met. And, and so time is really of the essence. For getting those things in place. And so while we realize there is a. A, a period of time now where many of the meetings are focused on budget hearings. I, I would ask members of council to please be very cognizant, however. That it takes some time to get those things in place. And so the sooner we're able to get the authorization to do so. We're able to get these things in place and lines are forming now. At municipalities and, and others are just like in our personal lives. The lives are forming at the bank to access. To access those instruments that could make cash available to us.
Well, thank you.
Ms. Harley, because probably every one of our revenue lines will be impacted. Over the next several months.
Yeah, thank you, I just wanted to say, thanks for that, that, that high level overview. Because again, I know none of us know how this virus is going to ultimately impact us. But we know it's going to have a negative impact. And you, you definitely underscored some of, just some, you know, concerns as it relates to. Making sure, oh, sorry about that. Making sure, you know, that our basic and essential needs are being met as a municipality. As we are being concerned about those that are out of work, so thank you for sharing that information.
Mr. Turner, do you have your hand up?
Thank you, Councilman Friel. My question may be directed to, to Mary. We spoke about our rating, our ratings being, being still good. Was, was our rating affected at all positively when we, when, when your office, the treasurer's office? Found some missing, I think, I, I don't know how to say it, some missing money over years of, of an account that we paid. And you recovered that, would that have reflected our, our rating to a positive?
I, I, I'll, I'll answer that. Councilman Turner, if that's okay with you. I think you're referring to, this was maybe back in two thousand and seventeen. When a deceased pensioner. It was discovered that there was a deceased pensioner that had been receiving payments over a period of. I think it was about twenty years, it was a long time. And it amounted to seventy thousand dollars that I do, that I do remember the amount. Because we were determined to, one, understand how that happened. It happened prior to my administration, but I wanted, we wanted to make sure we had some things in place. So that that would not be experienced again. And then the second commitment that we made was that we would do everything that we could to recover those monies. And both happened. We recovered the seventy thousand dollars. And so that went back into the coffers for pensioners and into that fund. And then we also put in place something that I referred to a little earlier, which is the. The annual verification process. So annually now, you know, what we realized is if someone is deceased, they can't tell you, don't keep sending me checks. And many times, and most times their families have the integrity to communicate that to our office. Realizing that it is against the law to receive and, you know, and accept monies. Of someone who's deceased that you're not entitled to, but that doesn't always happen. And so if they don't tell us, we have put in place a secondary step. So that once a year, we're verifying every single pensioner. That, or pension benefit recipient that receives a check from, from the city pension fund. And they, they, they must authenticate and verify on some information. It allows us to update our records with their contact information so we can keep in touch with them. And, and we do a monthly, in fact, we now have a system where we can do real time. Every day, we can run a check to see if there is a certain. If an individual who for some reason, we are left to suspect that, 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 you know, they may. Be, be deceased, we're able to run a real time data search to verify that. Those, the, the, the size of that. That issue was not one that was large enough where that would have affected and, and didn't affect the city's bond rating. However, the city's bond rating was impacted. As a result of the very devastating fire that. We suffered as a city family with the loss of lives of several of our firefighters. And the costs associated with that were really considered a catastrophic loss. And so that was a significant enough loss. That it did affect our rating. That coupled with what the agencies considered to be a higher debt balance than. Than they really would like to have seen, so the combination of those. Is, it, it did cause the rating agency, I want to say in two thousand eighteen. I believe, to. To, to add a negative outlook to the city's rating agency. So it is a double eight two, but they put a negative, so it was a double eight two with, with a negative outlook. That negative outlook did not mean a downgrade, but what it meant was they sort of wanted to watch it. And they wanted to see how the city rebound from that experience. And I'm really pleased to say on behalf of the, the city as a whole, that our rebound has been strong. Our fund balance is, is, is very strong, I want to say at thirty percent. They look for a twenty-five percent and we had dropped below that. With that catastrophic event. And, and so we have continued to be in dialogue with the rating agencies. Over the eighteen month period that they typically use as a watch period. And, and the general reaction and response has, from the agencies. Has been very, very favorable with the city having essentially met all of the. Financial metrics that, that we conveyed to the agency. That Wilmington as a city was targeting and expecting to do. That said, this coronavirus has now hit at. At, you know, just. An unfortunate time as well. We did have a meeting with the rating agencies last week. It was in that eighteen month window when they, you know, kind of keep their watchful eye on. And, and so it was time, that eighteen month period had arrived. And we had a, had a rating agency review and discussion with them, myself, members of my team. Key members of, of the, the mayors, the, the administration. And, and again, they, I, their response was very favorable. However, they also acknowledged the reality of this economic downturn, which has so much uncertainty for everyone. So, so we're, you know, we're waiting to hear what their reaction is overall. To the current double eight two rating for the city. And, and we're hopeful that we will hear that very soon.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, did you have a question?
Yes, yes. Good evening, Treasurer, I appreciate you being, you know, ta- taking your time and being so thoughtful with, with this presentation. I, I had a few follow-up questions just about the trustee fees. I know it was discussed between you and Mary. And I, I just wanted to understand just how much lower are we talking about the trustee fees now being? Given at least conservative estimates of a loss, because there will be some savings, I believe, right?
Yeah, we fully expect the trustee fees to not come in at the one hundred thousand dollar mark. Now, that was a valid number as of, of, you know, thirty, sixty days ago. Based on how the markets performed last year. What we paid in trustee fees last year as a result of that strong market. And frankly, how well the market was, was doing. As of, you know, about sixty days ago or so. I like to say with trustee fees, it is a. If, if we end up having to pay a hundred thousand dollars, I'll put it like this, it's a good problem to have. Because what that will mean is that the market will have rebounded. The returns will have been so strong. And, and, and as a result, the investment managers would have earned that. Much in compensation or fees, if you will. So that would be a good problem to have if the market should rebound in such a strong way. But as you recognize, and I think as Mary indicated, that is very unlikely. And so it's difficult to predict how much less the fees will be. But certainly they will be proportionately less. In, in alignment with the performance of the market and the returns on the fund. I, I mean, they, they, they could be half of what's shown here. And what's key to remember is that whatever. They, no more will be paid out of the fund for those fees than is earned. So, so that one hundred, if it becomes fifty, that's all that will be paid. Out of the fund for those trustee investment services.
Okay, and I, thank you very much, Treasurer, and I have a follow-up question to that. Specifically related to just your direct costs, given the emergency crisis. Has your office experienced direct costs that may be reimbursable by, by either state or federal branches? Because I know, you know, each department's going through their own books and seeing what is related to emergency response and what is not. So has your office experienced any direct cost right now?
So we have. But in proportion to what I would say, other departments are likely to experience. I would say ours are likely to be nominal. We prepared, and, and I want to thank the Director of Emergency Management. For the initiative that he took back in November of last year. Of reaching out to, I, I believe, all of the offices across the city. And ours included to, to work on and put in place. Our emergency preparedness plan, our continuing operation. Continuity of operations plan. And so when this COVID nineteen situation hit. Frankly, we were, I feel in my office, very well prepared to act. And we did, we were able to act, I think, very swiftly to, to be able to continue the continuity of services. Our banking services remotely. Moving, moving monies to. As we need to and, and continuing to manage cash, manage liquidity, manage investments. To be able to support pensioners. And continue to make sure all payments and dispersments are made on time. It has been extremely helpful that we transitioned to one hundred percent. Direct deposit for payroll. I cannot tell you how big a difference that has made in, in the. The continuity and the efficiency of our being able to continue to get payroll. And payroll deposits out to individuals without having paper checks. And the, the, the process of handling those. And, and so most of what we've experienced was the need to be sure our, my team. Was equipped, is equipped with the technology to be able to work remotely. That's for the most part, the kinds of, of costs, direct costs. That we've experienced from a, a direct operating general fund impact.
And, and thank you very much, Treasurer, and just lastly, kind of on that, on, on that same line. You know, i- i- in terms of, you know, I know this budget was kind of baked in a few months ago. Do you have more of a, more of a conservative streamlined post-COVID budget that you'll be ready to present? You know, because I do look at things like the grants, grants to agencies and community services. You know, is there a thought maybe about trimming a little bit of that, you know, because I believe that's a newer fund. It's, it's been in place since eighteen, so is that something that's maybe on the table for your department? As we move towards a finalized budget?
Well, we have not relooked at our budget as yet. Specifically with regard to, you know, what changes might. You know, be sensible or might, might be available to us. So we, we haven't done that yet. Now, we have certainly been thinking through some of the ways that we. Might continue to support the community that would be consistent with. With the social distancing and the, you know, the need for, for being safe. And, and so our smart savers engagement. Certainly, we are, are looking to ways to continue, frankly, it's, it's. Equally as important now to engage with young people. Their home, from school, I think their parents are looking for. Ways to keep them learning, to keep them involved, to keep them interested and engaged. And so we are currently looking at how particularly that program that usually runs through the summer. Is usually very much engaging face to face with. is usually very much engaging, um, face-to-face with young people in groups. And so recognizing that those, um, forums may not, uh, likely won't be available, um, or advisable, um, this season. Uh, we are looking to how we might use, um, apps and, um, online learning and, um, things of that nature to still, um, serve our young people and, and not short, shortchange them on that kind of growth and development. And so there would still be the costs associated with developing those materials and delivering it in that way.
Okay, thank you, Treasurer. Now's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Turner, do you have another question?
Yes, thank you. Um, oh, for, for one, uh, I, I, Councilman, Councilman Johnson, thank you for those, those questions. Um, one thing I, I, I wouldn't want to do is, is trim the community service or the community grant, um, portion. I think right now is, is more, we, we might need to be thinking about adding more to it towards the fact of, um, teaching, teaching behaviors of savings and, and, and spending, um, as well about things that we can kind of assist the community. Um, I, I think that we can probably see from other departments where they can, might cut back on certain things that might not be needed. But right now, I think that far as community agencies or community, um, engagement, um, projects with, with the Treasurer in saving or behavior or discipline, um, our communities need to know those things now more than ever. Um, because, because of, uh, bills being piled up and people might have frivolous spending. Um, we need to make sure that not only the youth, but their parents and everybody combined. So I would think of, of looking at ways of being innovative to adding to that, that line if possible. Um, uh, Treasurer, I don't know if you have any ideals about, about that, um, as well, about how we can, uh, kind of engage, um, and, and be inter- interactive with the community more, um, during this state. And I know with technology and you can't be in the face of people right now. So we would have to probably, um, increase that line to be able to, 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 to match what, what the times are. Um, but my question to you was, was going to be mainly towards, um, what would be your wish list? If you had a wish list, um, as, as Treasurer, um, what, what would be your wish list? Um, that would help you to be able to save the city more, um, educate the city more and, and whatever else that you see down the pipe, what would that be, wish list be?
Um, w- w- well, I, you know, in kind of just reacting to some of your initial, um, comments, I, um, really couldn't agree with you more about the need in the community around budgeting and dealing with the stress of the financial impact that this, um, this, uh, COVID-19 is going to have on, on people. And so, um, the foreclosures and bankruptcies, those things are likely to, to follow. Um, and so people will be looking for more and more assistance in managing through those processes. And, um, I, I would love to have, uh, my team be able to, um, to step up and do more in helping to meet that need. And there are certainly some things we could do. I will, uh, um, and so what I will say is, um, to, to that end, that is so important, that the community is supported in that way, that frankly, um, but like everyone needs to look at their budget and see what can we do to help, um, you know, free up, uh, monies, first of all, to meet the, the downturn in the economic condition that we're facing, but also perhaps to potentially, um, fund some of the initiatives that can help in this crisis itself. And what I will say is, um, I would turn to reduce things that, for my team internally first, travel, for example, and registration fees for conferences. And not that those things are not critically important, they are. Um, but that's the sacrifice that I would, would make and, and, and look to my team to make is to make it ourselves, to postpone that development ourselves. Um, uh, for the sake of continuing to be able to support, um, the community. Um, you know, in terms of a wish list, um, I, I really have to give that a bit more thought because I haven't placed myself so much in the, the wish list, um, you know, frame of mind of late. However, um, honestly, I would say there are a couple of things that come to mind. One is communications. Um, if you look at the last chart that was up, um, the size of our team, our team is very small. And what you won't see there that you see in all of the other elected offices, um, council, the mayor's office, is support for policy and communications. Um, and so, and, and perhaps in the past, the Treasurer's Office did very little of that in educating and communicating to the public. But hearkening back to what I started with as our core principles around, um, transparency and, and fairness. It, um, y- you can't do those things without communicating and educating the public. And so one of the things on my wish list would be, um, resources to be able to, uh, in, in, increase and improve our communications and our ability to, to inform the public, to educate them. Um, because I just fundamentally believe that, if one, it's our duty. And secondly, um, it's how we keep a good government, is having our people informed and empowered, um, and educated. Um, and, uh, a- and, and frankly, the other would be to have, um, uh, resources that, um, from a, a legal and an advisory standpoint that, that my team could rely on for, um, real support of my team and of the Treasury function. Um, because frankly, we really don't have that. And, um, and that would, that would also be on my wish list. It's an important, um, uh, professional resource to have, particularly in the highly regulatory environment that we operate in with the SEC and the MSRB and, uh, you know, post-issue compliance and all of those things. Um, having a, a direct resource for, um, for the, the myriad of issues that we, uh, deal with that I could count on to work with Treasury, uh, would be welcomed. And then I'd say the last thing is, and, 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 um, and most of council are on and here with us. And that is to be able to engage more with council. Um, and I know that the opportunities to do that are, are, are few and far between and limited. But if I had a wish list, I might put that really at or near the top. Um, because I, I, I think we, I, I treasure the opportunities that we've had to do that. And we, we've made some opportunities, we've had some over the, the couple of years. And so, uh, on my wish list would be the ability for us to, to do more of that. Um, a- again, in the spirit of, um, of, of, of sort of educating across, um, uh, organizations and, um, you know, collaborating on what is in the best interest of our shared constituency.
Thank, thank you. Uh, and just two, two questions that it will be, um, they're kind of connected. How, how, how much has, how much has your, your department saved the city? And also, how much, how much are we, how much legal fees are we being, being charged, um, to the taxpayers for some of the, uh, legalities that's going on with the Treasury Department?
Um, you know, I should have the, uh, I, I, I should kick myself for not having that figure, honestly, of the savings that we've, savings impact that we've had on, on the city. Um, um, multiple millions of dollars. We've had the, the benefit and the pleasure, honestly, of, of being able to save, um, for, for the city. Um, everything from our, uh, the refunding that we've done with the savings of $4 million. Um, uh, in, in total, over the three years, it's been in the neighborhood of about $30 million, $30 million. Um, very recently, uh, I believe we, um, you'll recall that we brought forward an opportunity for a refunding of some bonds, um, really kind of real time. Uh, we brought that forward in the December, January timeframe. And the opportunity, um, uh, was there for several million, um, dollars in, in savings. And, um, that would be by refunding, uh, some of the series of existing bonds that the city has. Um, obviously, the climate is somewhat different now, but we continue to monitor. And, um, and, and I have a philosophy, be ready to strike when the opportunity exists. And so I'm confident that that opportunity is coming back for us. And so we, um, we, you know, we still have things, um, you know, in, in locked-in mode and, and ready to go with, um, what would be, in that case, a $7 million, um, savings opportunity. Um, with regard to legal costs, um, are you referring to the litigation that's underway or legal fees within my organization for legal services?
I'm referring to the, the, the legalities that's, um, underway.
Okay. Um, and so the, the, the lawsuit that is underway, um, with, uh, the mayor having, um, filed a, a lawsuit, um, making various claims, all I will say unfounded, with regard to, uh, my, um, authority and my, uh, management and operation of the Treasury function.
Excuse me, folks.
It is a, um, it's a situation where there is a, uh, whatever fees have been expended or wasteful taxpayer money.
Folks, I don't mind discussing how much the legal fees are, but I really don't think we should be discussing the back and forth between the Treasurer and the Mayor's Office and these lawsuits.
Okay, so let me say the legal fees. Okay, so specifically to the question, so, um, the legal fees, um, have, um, exceeded, and, and, and I can say for sure, for those that I see out of, out of, um, you know, from my, um, angle of the, the situation, have exceeded, uh, $80,000. And, um, I, from what I see in the, um, in the mayor's, uh, uh, the fees associated with, um, his legal counsel, outside legal counsel, um, more than triple that. And I'll repeat, any amount is, is said that the, um, public is, is experiencing the cost of a, um, unfounded and wasteful, um, suit.
Other questions?
Thank you, thank you, Treasurer.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? Um, seeing any, let me check here. All right, I don't see any public comment. Um, so we're going to go ahead and close out this hearing. We do have one more this evening at, uh, at 7:30, and that will be the council budget and a presentation by, uh, the Chief of Staff, Marshall Bastine. Thank you all, and I'll see you in a little while.
Thank you all.
It is Wednesday, April 8th, 2020. Uh, we are in the first night of budget hearings. We've heard from the mayor's office and the city treasurer's office. And now we're going to be reviewing, uh, city council's budget. Uh, before we move on, I'd like to just acknowledge our members that are on with us. We have, uh, our President, Hanif Shabazz. Um, we have Santi Oliver, Third District, Linda Gray, First District, Rhonda Walsh, at large, Michelle Harley, Fourth District, Ashima Dixon, at large, Londa McCoy, Sixth District. Did I miss anyone? Okay, uh, this one's a little different. Um, we will have a presentation by Chief of Staff, Marshall Bastine. Uh, some council members have seen the presentation, but I'm going to ask you to let her complete the presentation, and then we'll open it right up for, uh, questions for council members. Obviously, this is a little different, and we don't, we don't have, we don't present ourselves with questions. We just, as you, as you have them, we'll, we'll, we'll ask you to, uh, bring them forward. Um, once again, uh, this hearing is a 90-minute hearing. We will be asking anyone that would like to make public comment, they can go ahead and raise their hand anytime, uh, during the meeting. And then at the end, we'll, we'll, we'll allot time for public comment. They will allow three minutes, uh, for any comment on city council's budget. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Marshall Bastine to go through the presentation.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable President Hanif Shabazz, Chairman Frill, and honorable members of council and to the public. I am Marshall Bastine, Chief of Staff, Wilmington City Council.
Test and review.
Hold, hold on for one minute.
Hey, hey, you, Marshall.
Okay, here.
Nope. Your microphone is.
Start over, please. Start over, please.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable President Hanif Shabazz, Chairman Frill, and members of council, honorable members of council and to the public. I am Marshall Bastine, Chief of Staff, Wilmington City Council, and I will be presenting the city council's fiscal year '21 proposed budget. For the public, you can access and review the current proposed fiscal year '21 budget presentations on the budget website that was developed by council staff. The budget website address is www.wilmdebudget.org. I first want to acknowledge that this budget was developed prior to the further developments and surge in of COVID-19. There were several discussions with council as this budget was developed. I'm asking council at the request of the president if they can provide some suggestions for reducing council's proposed budget that is being presented tonight, which has increased by $122,000. If you can please provide your suggestions and email them to me, President Shabazz, or Chair, Chairman Frill by April the 14th. Just want to go over the mission of city council. Number one, to provide, to provide visionary leadership and policymaking relative to quality life matters. Number two, to develop well-researched legislation that will enable the government to provide its residents, visitors, and businesses with the highest quality of public service fiscally through, number one, sound decision-making, number two, strong ethical leadership, number three, open communication. Number two, strong ethical leadership. Number three, open communications. And number four, transparency. Another mission of city council is to provide the checks and balances on the executive branch of government through committee men, uh, through committee meetings and legislative measures to ensure transparency and accountability. Number four is connecting with constituents to identify the needs in the community and to devise strategies to address those needs by legislation and collaborating with the executive branch of government. Also, if you turn to the next slide on page three, council has adopted a strategic plan. All legislation that has been developed by council and all the funding decisions are based upon the ten priorities that's listed on the next slide. Some of the priorities are a safe and secure Wilmington, a grown Wilmington, a stabilized Wilmington, to name a few. Please go to council's website at W W W WilmingtonCityCouncil.com, dot com to review. In addition, council is in the process of updating the strategic plan, which will also take in consideration, um, the recent changes that's going on with COVID nineteen. City council's purview. City council is a legislative branch of government. There are thirteen elected officials, all apart time, represents eight districts across the city, is governed by the city code and the state charter. Primary responsibilities is enacting laws, which are ordinances, such as the annual operating budget, draft and resolutions, providing checks and balances, as I mentioned earlier, and provide constituent services for city residents. The city council office operations. We have a backend office to help the council. Number one, there is a legislative and strategy division. Um, within that, you have legislative and policy research, breadth of ordinances and resolutions. We have a financial and administrative support division. This is to provide support to council members as well as processing scholarships and fund requests. We have a television station, W I T N, um, channel twenty-two. We also have a website at W I T N twenty-two dot org to provide government programs to promote the city Wilmington, also have various social media outlets as well as a website. The city clerk, the city clerk division is the official custodian of all city records. And last but not least is communications, public relations, um, as well as our franchise agreement, because we have to pay the public the education as well as lease access. Now, I just wanna talk a little bit about city council's fiscal year twenty-one proposed budget for the general fund. City council's proposed fiscal year twenty, twenty-one general fund budget totals two point two million dollars. It went up a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Out of the two point two million dollars, one point five million is for personal services costs. Personal services costs are your people costs, your salaries, your healthcare. There was one new position added, which was, um, a legislative council with salary and benefits totaling a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, this position was strongly needed so that city council can have a, um, dedicated attorney for the city council office. We changed the vacant CFO position to a strategy and policy director. Um, the two changes above was offset by reduction in temp salaries that went down seventy-six thousand dollars, as well as there were savings in the healthcare cost line of roughly thirty-one thousand dollars. We still have continued funding in the temp salaries account line of approximately fifty-five thousand dollars that will continue to provide support for, for two temp, for two part-time office receptionists that handle the front desks, as well as a part-time strategy, um, analyst. There are six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars budgeted for MSNA. MSNA stands for material supplies and equipment. That went up a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So initially, I said that our budget increased by a hundred and twenty-two thousand, while the bulk of that cost come from out of the MSNA category. Within the MSNA category is consultants. And consultants increased a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Um, that hundred and eighteen thousand dollars increase is due to, um, added costs for re, um, redistricting, which totals a hundred thousand dollars. That is a mandate for council to do, so we do need the expertise to deal with, um, redistricting. And secondly, um, eighteen thousand dollars additional costs pertaining to the policy fellows. Within our budget, just want to talk about, um, the total that we had budgeted for, for consultants, so we can see what the continued cost is. I just mentioned about a hundred, hundred thousand dollars for the redistricting expertise. The urban policy fellows will be forty-eight thousand dollars for two part-time policy fellows. There's continued funding of sixty thousand dollars for WCAC, the Wilmington Community Advisory Council. There's twelve thousand dollars for contractual services for non-legislative resolutions and ads for their contract. There's also twelve thousand dollars for contractual services for advising, strategy, and relationship building. Within MSNA is also what we call community activities of three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. This here is what the bulk of the funds are for council members discretionary funds and grant funds. There is continued funding of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for council members discretionary funds, which there's ten thousand dollars per council member, uh, which covers your scholarships and your discretionary funds. There's ten thousand dollars to provide support for your annual parades and festivals. There's continued support of sixteen thousand dollars for funding for sponsor, sponsorships, ads, and tickets. There's twenty-two thousand dollars for community services to support for grants and activities. There's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in miscellaneous projects. So the hundred, that, hundred and thirty-five thousand typically your, um, your grant fund for five thousand or more, or five thousand and less. So out of the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars has been allocated for W E C E C, for Wilmington Early Care Education Council. The remaining hundred and twenty thousand dollars is to be shared amongst council members. Um. Next, I just wanna talk a little bit about, um, W I T N's proposed budget, which is the K T V fund. Number one, W I T N is award-winning team. I do wanna say that, uh, Paul Cozy is here as well. Um, he has joined in. Um, and I want to mention too, before I even get into, um, their budget, um, with us using the Zoom technology, I do want to recognize W I T N for taking the lead, for being the experts, um, on that. Um, they've been very detailed in handling that, so I just want to, um, to recognize them while I can. Um, also, um, Yucenia T, Tavarez was recognized by the Delaware Press Association for two awards that she just recently won. One is for first place for twenty twenty, best on the scene news reporter, and another for first place regarding, um, twenty twenty, um, best prepared reporter. And with her two awards, um, there's also support with the W I T N team supporting her to make that happen. So W I T N's fiscal year twenty twenty-one proposed budget total one million dollars is down actually eighty-one thousand dollars. Um, personal services total seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, as I mentioned earlier, that's your people costs, salaries, and healthcare, and et cetera. MSNA costs total two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Um, what makes up the bulk of the MSNA costs? There's a hundred thousand dollars for consultants for the public relations services contract. There's twenty thousand dollars for the Laro contract, which is our maintenance contract for equipment. There's eighteen thousand dollars for the Swagit contract. That's our annual contract so that we can be able to video stream. There's twenty thousand dollars to address equipment needs that W I T N might have. There's fifteen thousand dollars for parking. Some of the current projects in the pipeline for W I T N, one is a new studio. This is something that's been in the work. It just hasn't stalled because of COVID nineteen, so the contractors cannot come in to start as of yet. Um, there's upgrades to technology for both the chambers and committee room that's been stalled because of COVID nineteen as well. Um, if you take a look at W I T N's, um, websites and social media feeds, there's various news packaging um, on various of the social media platforms that, um, so the staff has been very engaged in involvement, and we encourage the public to visit W I T N's website at W W W W I T N twenty-two dot org. The next slide is, um, is a, um, slide of potential, of what we like to have the studio to look like, so it's a rendering of what the future, um, studio will look like in W I T N. Um, so that's what the next two slides are. I'd like to share a little bit about our staffing levels. We have a total of twenty-nine full-time equivalents. Out of the twenty-nine full-time equivalents, thirteen of, thirteen are council members and sixteen are staff positions. And, um, our positions increased by one position.
Michelle.
Yes. Um, the next chart is, um, the chart of the org chart. Yes.
Okay, well now we'll go ahead and open it up for questions, uh, council members, and Mr. Turner, you're first up.
Yes, uh, two questions. Um, Marshall, this right there where you're at with the, um, can you go back, uh, slides?
Which one was, was your question on?
Right there, right there. Um, the thirteen council members, none, none of the council members are paid from the C A T V fund, right? Correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So all the thirteen council members are paid out of the general fund, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And, and, and out of those, how many of those twenty-nine, I guess that's twenty-nine employees total, um, how many are paid out of the C A T V?
Out of the, um, out of the C T V, um, um, would be all the W I T N, all, all the W I T N staff. And, um, ten percent of my salary is charged to the K T V fund, and the admin support that provide, one admin support position provides support to the K T V fund, which that position is funded, um, fifty percent from that fund.
And how many, so, so outside of this, how many staff members are in W I T N total?
That'd be eight.
So total nine employees that we have out of the twenty-nine come out of the C T V, including your ten percent?
Yes, and then, uh, one other, um, staff member, um, that's funded fifty percent from the K T V fund that provide admin support to W I T N.
So ba- basically, basically eight, eight in about sixty, sixty percent?
That's correct.
Okay. And, um, if, if we can go back to the, um, the other slide, um, for the breakdown of council's, um, council's budget, where the grants?
On slot page seven.
Uh, I'm not sure.
Yeah, to be page seven, the, um, three hundred and thirteen thousand community activities.
Yes, correct. So, so here on this slide, so a total of two fifty will be divided amongst, um, twelve council members, is that what we're saying? For that, that line right, for, for the one thirty, adding the one thirty and the one twenty to be shared amongst council members, would that be two fifty amongst twelve council members? Is that what we're saying?
Well, the one, it say one thirty to divide it be by, um, the thirteen, the one thirties for, um, all thirteen council members, and then it say, um, the hundred and twenty thousand is to be shared amongst council members, yes. To be shared.
So it'd be, so the hundred and twenty, is that amongst thir, all thirteen, or is that amongst twelve?
Um, that's, uh, I say all council members. I would assume that it would include the, the, um, the president. I didn't go back and say, well, it was thirteen or twelve, but I would assume that would be the, the president. Um.
I, I mean, I only, only asked that, only asked that because, only asked that because, um,
Yeah, and it did.
Would, would the vote, would the vote, um, from the last time when council asked for the money to be dispersed, um, that was amongst twelve, twelve and not thirteen. Um, so I'm just asking for clarity on, on this one.
It's, it's my understanding it's, um, it's thirteen.
Okay, and, and do we know, do we know what happened to the, the splitting up of what we voted on, um, prior, prior to splitting it up, uh, to, to all thirteen?
No, I'm not, um, no, I'm not aware.
Is there, is the, can the finance chair, uh, speak on that?
I do not have the answer. You're saying how much was left over after all the other grants were done?
First, what, what, why, what, what happened to it being dispersed if we voted on it? And yes, how much is left over, but we, we as council voted on it, but none of us, um, received that, that money. So I, I mean, what happened to it and, and what, you know, um, how much is left of it?
No.
I do not have the numbers for the twenty twenty budget though. As you know, a great deal of it was spent. Uh, there were a number of grants written out early on for about forty-nine hundred each, so that ate up a lot of it right there. But we can get you whatever the current balance is.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, councilman Turner, you want the current balance?
Uh, the current balance and also what happened, what happened to the money that we all voted on. Um, at the time that we voted on it, the forty-nine hundred to all those agencies weren't, weren't out as of that, that time that we voted on it. But that, you know, that could be another discussion, but ye- yes, I, I, I think that all of us at council, since we voted on it, need to know what, where, where do we, where do we delegate that money and, and, and what's left over from that? Thank you.
Uh, first, I wanna say we've been joined by council member Chris Johnson, and next up is, uh, council member LaRona Walsh.
Twenty twenty budget.
Could you tell me, please, um, what year is the contract up with Comcast?
Um, I believe, um, Comcast has, um, I believe we have five or, five or six more years with that contract.
Okay, and do you happen to have, I'm sorry, I'm having a, a hard time getting access to some of the documents. Uh, so I don't, I can't see anything right here, right now. But could you tell me, um, how much of a revenue source we got out of them last year?
Um, I'll have to get back to you. I don't have it right in front of me.
Okay, that's fine.
But I, I, I will say this, um, Councilwoman Walsh, is that, um, the number of sus- subscribers for, um, for Comcast services has declined tremendously because now a lot of people are now, um, streaming, um, and using other services rather than on cable. So the last three to four years, I know the number of subscribers has came down, um, um, tremendously, so I will get to those, um, figures.
Well, I'd appreciate that because that's actually something, that's an alarm I've been pulling for the last five years because of the different cable companies that are all over the place. Um, that you certainly don't have to pay one twentieth of what you have to pay Comcast. Uh. So I see no reason at all. I, I, I think the present form of contracts that they've actually given out with franchise fees and all that throughout the country, I see them as being obsolete. And they won't even be signing contracts like that anymore. So if the city is serious about continuing this TV station, um, the city's going to end up having to pay for it, and it will have to be shared by many other departments, I believe, since they are ones that are also taking advantage of this station right now. So that's all I have to say on the subject, but if you could get me those figures, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Uh, just also wanted to mention that we've been joined by council member, uh, Trippie Congo. Other questions from council members? All right, uh, President Shabazz.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanted to, um, tie in with Councilwoman Walsh's, um, concerns. That is something that the C, um, C T V commission, um, has taken under standard consideration and, um, there's tentative perspectives to see of how we get ahead of the curve before our, the, um, you know, it, uh, that contract expires, we lose those revenues, and how do we maintain what we got going forward? So that, thank you for bringing that up. That is something that is on the minds of the C T V commissioners.
Councilmember Gray.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Freel. I have a question about, it's page, it's level four, page that has projection 21, 401 on it. My question is, is that last year our budget was $2,98,122. And the actuality of spent was only $1,216,420. There's $700,000 there that we didn't spend. So why are we asking for more money this year? We're asking for an increase in our budget when we didn't even spend $700,000 of our budget last year.
I'm not sure what page you're looking at, but if you were trying to the report by OMD.
General Fund, Department 127, City Council, Other Special Purpose.
Yeah, okay, so that's just one division. You need to actually refer to page number, page 17, that looks at our total budget. Actually, if you look at the page, actually, if you look at the bottom of page 18, you would see that for fiscal year 20 budget, our total budget, general fund budget is $2,980,000. And year to date, we have extended $1.2 million, $1.2 million.
Yes.
If you look at our trends from, from prior years, fiscal year 2017 is at 2.2 million actual. Fiscal year 18, we'd be at $2.1 million actual.
So I don't understand that answered my question. What happened to the 700,000? And if we didn't use that money, why are we even asking for more money?
I'm not sure what 700,000 that you're referring to. You have to refer to page 17 and page 18.
Okay.
Totals on it.
I don't have page 17, page 18, I have page five.
Okay, so then I'm not sure which document you're referring to. Are you referring to a document prepared by OMD because it has 18 pages? And it's a document that I've sent to all the council persons?
Well, I'm referring to the document, but I only, I am on page five. I said I didn't print everything out. So it says our budget FY '20, original budget, and then it says FY '20, year to date. So you're saying this isn't up to date? And I have to go to page 17 or 18?
What does page five say? Because I don't know what you have on the top of your page five.
On the top of the page five, it says Fund 101, General Fund, Department 127, City Council, Other Special Purposes. Well, it says FY '20, original budget, $2,98,122. Says FY '20, year to date, actual, $1,216,420. There's a $700, $700,000 difference between the original budget and the split actual year to date.
Right, okay. So if you look at page four and you look at the different categories, if you look at personal services and personal services, year to date, we have spent $426,000, $426,000. We're budgeted at $665,000. So we still have the remainder of the year to finish that, to finish that out.
So you're projecting that we're going to spend $700,000 between now and the end of June? Is that correct?
What I'm, what I'm breaking down to you is the different categories because you, you mentioned the numbers. So yes, and these, this report was ran as of, as of March the 16th. So today is, so we still missing three to four, four weeks of data in these reports that were ran by OMD.
Okay, one last question. You refer to page three on here, what were you telling me to look at? Special?
I'm just looking at page three. Page three is a department, is the summary of all the funds.
And this was run on 318, page three. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, next up we have Councilmember Dixon.
Thank you, Councilwoman Freel. Just had a couple of quick questions. One is, I've heard in the other budget hearing so far that they're preparing for cuts. Are we preparing for cuts within our city council budget as well?
One of the opening, as one, as part of the opening comments that I made is that because of COVID-19, this year was developed prior to and that reaching out to council members if they can provide some suggestions for some possible reductions, if they can provide those suggestions by the 14th, if they can be emailed either to the president or Chairman Freel or myself by the 14th. So we are looking for some suggestions from council members.
Okay, sorry I missed that, I came in late. I apologize for missing that.
So if you had some suggestions, if you can, please let us know.
Okay. And then also with that, could we just have something that says if we are operating at 50% of our budget versus 75%, will we be able to see that, can we get that breakdown too?
Yes, I can provide a analysis. You said 50% operation and 75%?
Yes, please. And I only say that because I think if we're really going to show the public that we are also in this with them, as far as COVID, I think that'll be a good way for us to even showcase as council that we're, we're making some adjustments on our side in a drastic way too. So that's why I was just asking if we could figure out a way to either decrease the percentage wise, and that could be possibly an idea also, but because I will be more than happy to, for example, for the additional funds that I get from the legislation that we did. And then also even for my discretionary funds, I would just give mine away to organizations that need it or also community members. So I'm willing to do that just across the board, just for that, and leave my 6,000 just for scholarship. I think at least if, if we can figure out some ways of really know that what we're going to come into and how long it's going to be able to get people out of where we are going to be standing for the next, you know, year, year and a half maybe, that, you know, having some type of places to be able to really help them in that space, I think would be important.
President Chabaz?
Yes, I just would like to just, in the response to Councilwoman Dixon's point, that's our sentiment exactly, which is why we say from the very beginning that we were looking for suggestions because we know that we're going to have to make some cuts. And not knowing what those, how drastic cuts, how drastically the cuts need to be, that we are very open to demonstrating to our constituents that we can, we're going to operate as frugal as we can, still as, still doing the work of responsibility as legislative branch of government, but how could we do it and it not be detrimental to support of this community for the things that they need? But we know that we need to take a very fine-tooth comb look at our current budget and how we could reduce that. So that, that you said you missed the opening, we already have, know that we need to do that and look forward to suggestions coming from other members of council on how to do that.
Other questions from council members? Councilmember Harley.
Oh yes, thank you, Councilwoman Freel. One question, I think when, Michelle, you started the presentation, you mentioned we, we're going to add a position. Did I hear you say that?
Yes, I mentioned a attorney, to have a dedicated attorney to address. So that city council can have a dedicated attorney, since we don't have that and it's really a need that we need that has been lacking for some time now.
Okay. And my second question is this. Are all the salaries that the staff members got hired to make, are they going to be making the same salary during this budget cycle? And did anybody get an increase in their salary from when they were hired?
Are you talking about from when he was hired, January 1st of 2017? Or are you talking about?
Well, I guess, I'm sorry, to be specific. So I know we, we had consultants that were hired within the last year. I'm thinking specifically of those individuals. Are they making the same amount? Were there any increases in our consultants' salaries? That's what I'm asking.
No, there was no increases in our consultant salaries.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Congo?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Freel. I'm not sure if this is the right time and the right environment to be adding staff. I know that we may feel that we need a lawyer. And secondly, who would that lawyer, it's like who would that lawyer be serving? Would he be serving the president? Would he be serving individual council members? Would he be serving us as a council? How, how would, how would, how would that be worked in? Like who would that person be serving?
The person will be serving the entire body of council. So as council persons need, need legislation drafted, they need legislation on research. Like right now, we have to wait until the law department gets back, get back to us. Sometimes the law department, no disrespect to them, because I know that they have a full plate as well. So we're trying to be able to figure out a way where we can have a dedicated resource. If you recall before, when we had Shawna, that was assigned to us on a part-time basis. So we was looking for something similar to that. But with that, that was paid through an outside firm. So we was trying to find someone so we can have a dedicated services, like the type of dedicated services she was providing for the entire body of council at that particular time.
Okay, thank you. Who would, if, if we agree on, agreed on that, who would hire the lawyer? Would council president hire that person or would he as a council hire that person?
We have a, there's a, there's a personnel committee. And to my knowledge, typically what has been done is president typically reaches out to council persons for suggestions for names. And then when resumes and stuff come in, it has, typically has been shared with all, all the council persons as well.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if this is the right environment to add staff. Thank you, thank you for that information.
And I just want, I just want to say too that, you know, this year was developed prior to COVID-19. And we did have the savings to more than like cover the costs. What has happened is we had increased, our budget had went up $122,000 because consultants increased 118, because we added $100,000 for redistricting because we're going to need an expert to be able to handle the redistricting services, which is a mandate that, you know, like council needs to provide. You know, will that come in at $100,000? I mean, I mean, I don't know, but that will be something for the next session of council.
Also remember this is a proposed budget.
Right.
All right. Councilmember McCoy.
Thank you, Chair. We had discussed the redistricting at a, another meeting as we kind of bet our, what our budget looks like. I just want to make certain that she actually kind of talked about it a little bit here on, on the Zoom because I just wanted to be a little bit more plain. So what it was, was that the $100,000 that we will be using for the redistricting is based off of the census. Now, we do realize that we're right at that timeframe. We're doing the census now, we're still pushing. We've actually been given a little bit more time when it comes to trying to get those, those numbers in and getting more people to complete them. We desperately need that to happen. But will we, for us to set $100,000 in this budget, does that still look like something that needs to happen if we may not get a chance to do anything about it until the 2022 budget?
I just wanted to be clear is that typically the census will happen in, in calendar 2021 because of COVID-19. Could, could that change the timeframe? I mean, possibly, possibly. And, and if there's a suggestion out there regarding the redistricting to perhaps lower that, if we can get those type of suggestions to either the president or the finance chairman or myself by the 14th? Because like I said, this year was developed prior to.
I do want to add, Councilwoman McCoy, that I think we have to have something in there because you have to understand that we have to get this done prior to the 22 elections. So we might have to have this done by the end of next calendar year. So, working it done. And there is, I'm not real familiar with it. I mean, I was there 10 years ago and did this, but there's certain, this person will come in and run some numbers through models. And, you know, you may see one district, I think in 2010, in fact, your district lost a couple of folks and the fourth district picked up a couple of folks. But we don't have drastic changes, but we are required to go through this process. President, was that anything else?
Oh, no.
President Chabaz?
Thank you, Chairman Freel. That was something that I was going to share with Councilwoman McCoy, that, that is the fact of the overall, overall budget really only went up $22,000. And we still were able to add a person, the, the legal counsel into our budget with, with the fundings that we already have within our, appropriate in our budget. And it really only went up to 22,000, which was attributed to our two fellows. And as Councilman Freel indicated, that other $100,000 was a placeholder, as we shared when we discussed our budget, for that expert to come in. And so when we go back now because of COVID-19, and we look at things, that is possibly an area there where we can do some change, some reduction. And then because we needed it in '21 and we would just put it in our budget as a placeholder till then. But that is something that we could look at, which is why I welcome other recommendations from members of council on how we can reduce, possibly reduce it, our budget even further without reducing the delivery of services that we need to do as the legislative branch.
Councilmember Harley?
Thank you, Councilwoman Freel. So one thought comes to mind. Michelle, how much do we spend in food?
In food, we spend, we have, we have food budgeted at $11,292. So that, and business meetings at $6,000. So roughly $17,000 we have budgeted pertaining to food and business meetings.
Okay. And then I know that we used, well, I think the last budget, we budgeted money for training and things of that nature. How much money was budgeted for training last year?
Last year for, for training, which is in our registration fees account line, we have 9,500 budgeted for training, for registrations. And so that's what we have budgeted for that.
And my last question is like for traveling and going to conferences and things like that?
And we have $20,000 budgeted for travel.
We had $20,000 for travel?
Yes.
And how much was spent?
Year, year, year to date, $7,000.
Okay. I was just thinking about areas where we could cut back that would not impact the community or deliver services to the community. So that's why I was asking those questions. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Gray? Councilmember Gray?
I guess back to the money we're going to spend between now and the end of June, you expect the rest of the travel money to be spent between now and the end of June? You expect the rest of the travel money to be spent between now and the end of June?
Um, I think now because of, of COVID nineteen, I mean, no, that's not going to happen. I mean, there's not going to be any more traveling, so, no.
Also, well, that's an area that we could, yes, attribute the money to something else. Also, I noticed that in the budget, and hate to say this to Madam President, I think there's a couple hundred dollars or fifty dollars a month for lunches or meetings with community members. Um, excuse me.
We do, are you referring to, uh, we do have, um, funds budgeted in, in our food account line and our business account line for, for different meetings, such as, uh, meetings with the local delegation, meetings, um, that we have with council persons, um, meetings that we have with the administrations, um, uh, business meetings that we might have with the public, with, with, with constituents.
And why does that cost us money?
Excuse me?
Why does that cost us money? I don't think we could fund those type of things, meetings?
Yes, we, um, we do, we send our food and business account line and, um, and also, I mean, likewise, it's budgeted on, on the mayor's as well, as well as other city departments.
Well, this was specifically in the president's line of monthly expenditures for meetings. And if we're looking at cutting costs, I don't know why council is paying for meetings with community members. Everyone should be willing to participate freely.
Yeah, and, and, and so I just want to say too, with some of the business meetings, sometimes it might be a business, it might be, um, a luncheon the president might be having with the council person. It could be, um, a luncheon that the president might be having with, um, the mayor. Could be a luncheon, you know, with the superintendent, um, you know, so it's.
But you're, but you're basically suggesting that these are type of lines that we should look at reducing.
Correct.
The climate that we're in right now.
Okay, it's five hundred a month. I think that's a lot for paying for meetings with other people when now we realize, um, everyone should be cutting back and, especially with community members.
All right, great.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Turner?
Thank you. Um, Michelle, can we, um, can you give us the year-to-date, um, on all those lines? Um, all, all those lines for years, year-to-date, um, maybe, maybe us as council can come together and talk about some of the things we kind of want to delegate that the year-to-date, as far as the food that we're not using from council meetings and the budget hearings and, um, maybe any other travel that we're, since we're doing to stay at home, um, any other travel that we had that, that may have been coming down the pipe that we're not, we're, we're not going to do that. Can we see what all that year-to-date is?
Yes, I can get that, um, yes, I'll provide that information.
Not, not just only, not only that, just, Michelle, all, all the year-to-date, um, all the year-to-date funds, uh, every line, year-to-date, that'd help us be able to gauge and, and see, see what we possibly can put our heads together and see how we can help the community.
Yes, what I would do, yes, what I would do is run a, um, a more updated report and provide, provide that information. Um, and it is also be the same information that, um, the Office of Management Budget provide a weekly report that should be going to our council persons, and it has every account line. So what I would do is, um, run a report, um, as of tomorrow to get some updated figures.
I do want to mention we've been joined by Councilmember Sam Guy at large. Uh, next question is Councilmember Dixon.
Um, just had a quick question. So, um, remind me, I know, Michelle, you said that the, um, the, the studio, um, for the rendering that you showed, um, one, do we have a, a timeframe of when, um, that will happen? Because I know it's been a few years, I mean, a couple of years now since we've been kind of talking about, um, the studio being finished. Um, is there any, um, just like dates available that we can, or when it will be finished?
Yeah, um, actually.
As too, I'm sorry.
Yes, actually, um, because of COVID nineteen, um, the studio was supposed to be starting now, but that's put off, um, until COVID nineteen. So we're really excited to make that happen. So initially, um, we was hoping to have something, um, in place by, um, by July. The, all those timeframes will now change. Um, so, um, so initially we was hoping July, we just recently, um, signed, um, have, um, the contract, um, to have that to be done. So.
It's, and just to follow up on that, thank you, Michelle. Is there a reason why it's, it's taken this long for us to get, uh, somebody to contract to do it?
Um, there was, um, there was, there was initially, um, some, um, some issues that we were having, um, with both, um, procurement, um, and law, when we was initially looking to have this done. Um, so we finally were, we finally was able to come together to, um, figure out how to make this happen. So that's what took so long. Um, the WITM is really looking forward to, and we are also looking forward to having this new, um, studio because it's been, um, you know, long overdue, past overdue. So, um, we're glad that, um, we was able to get everything resolved so that we can get something, you know, moving forward.
But I like to ask your question.
All right, you, Sandy, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to hold up, uh, because next up was Councilmember Harley, and then I'll come to you.
Okay. Uh, thank you, um, Councilman Frill. Um, I think I seen fifteen thousand for parking. Did I see that, Michelle?
Yes, um, the fifteen thousand dollars for parking is, is so, is in, um, the KTV fund. And that's so that, um, the WITM, um, staff members, um, have, um, parking to be able, um, to park um, in, in the, um, garage next door where the hotel is.
Okay.
The Wilmington Parking Authority Garage.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Michelle, um, when is the deadline for the questions to be, um, submitted to you in reference to the budget here? I mean, you said we had, uh, we had some questions just to submit them to you. When is the deadline for that?
Yes, if you have some suggestions for reductions, we ask, maybe you can submit them to, um, Chairman Frill, President or myself. We can have those submitted by, um, the fourteenth, April the fourteenth. Yes.
Okay, I will have some. Thank you.
Councilmember McCoy?
Uh, uh, thank you, um, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just had a, a simple question. I was looking at last year's budget for our temp salaries at a hundred thirty. Um, right now, we're at fifty-seven. This year, uh, proposed budget is fifty-five. But everything before that actually is like around fifty or so. What actually, um, caused us to have such an increase this year? That we're able to go back down next year to, to the proposed, like, fifty thousand that we normally had? We bumped it up more than half, like, more, like, more than double for, uh, this year, fiscal year, um, twenty, that now we're able to go back down to, uh, fifty-five for next year. I'm just curious on what job that was?
Well, in, um, in, um, fiscal year twenty, if you, um, if you recall, if you recall, there was the, um, strategy and, um, policy, um, analyst position, the salary and benefits, um, was changed from the, um, from the regular salaries line on to the, to the temp salary, to the temp salaries account line. So that's why there was a, um, an increase, an increase there.
I, I thank you. That was one question.
Any other questions from council members?
Councilman Guy.
Mr. Guy?
Yes, um, I have a couple of issues I'm getting to touch on. First thing is the lawyer that's listed in our budget. Now, in our charter, the law department is supposed to be able to provide us all of our legal services. The legal department basically rules at all times in favor of the mayor and the president. They don't care what the law says or anything. And when they do their job, they try to help those two individuals as much as they can, even in the processing of legislation, even in, even in protecting council when there's FOIA violations. In all four instances, they've tried to protect illegal operations of council in their effort to protect the mayor and the president. So we do have a problem with legal services. Furthermore, the law department head, the last time they came before council, they were the ones who got most of you on council to agree for us not to know the legal business of the city. So as of right now, most of you don't know hardly any of the legal business of the city, because the law department basically told us it's none of our business as elected officials. They'll give us what they want us to have. So they got away with doing that. So now, we're gonna put a hundred thousand dollars in our budget for something that we don't need to pay for. So if a hundred thousand dollars is going to be spent to provide us with an attorney, that hundred thousand dollars needs to be transferred over to the law department's budget for us to select an attorney that will be assigned to city council exclusively, coming out of their budget. You're try, they're trying to play you to make you pay for something you're supposed to get for free as members of council. So I don't know who sat down and negotiated for us to pay for something that's supposed to be free to us. So you can, far as I'm concerned, that needs to be cut out, put in their budget, but it almost needs an asterisk next to that position, and that is for us as council to select the person. And by now, members of council should realize how important it is for us as an organization to do all hiring and firing. It was so important that they had a person from the law department say that we don't have that authority to do it with a vote of seven. And that's still being litigated in the court, for the court to tell us whether we have any rights as council to hardly do anything, or whether we gave up all our rights in the first place. So that's one aspect it is. The other thing is, is that redistricting. Most people have heard of redistricting, but very few people have been involved in all aspects of redistricting. So as legislators, all legislators vote on redistricting plans. Very few legislators actually sit down and create redistricting plans. Very few legislators litigate redistricting plans. So I, what I want to just establish is there's been no information sent to me about anything related to redistricting. And I'm basically the person who, in this community, since the nineteen nineties, has pretty much been the architect of the empowerment of the African-American community when it comes to redistricting, all the way from census legislation, which you all know, I put the original census legislation on the books to actually operate in the software to create districts and litigate it down in Dover. So this is my area of expertise, and what I know is that our community is going to get cheated if we put this in here as it's indicated, because then what we're basically doing is based on our current rules, the president is gonna pick a committee. And we've all seen how the committees are selected. They're selected so that Bud Frill, the mayor, Loretta, they all are the bosses over all the rest of us who are like slaves on.
All right, can you give your remarks to the budget?
Yeah, I am. I'm talking about the why we don't need you having a hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, we don't need that.
To be part of redistricting this year.
We don't need that in the budget at all.
Just talk about, well, fine, if you're saying they can have.
We don't need it at all, and I'm explaining why, and you don't want them to hear why, and you don't want to. I'm explaining why it needs to be pulled out. Now, if it's going to be put in, then we need to put it in, in a way where we clearly make sure that none of the people that I mentioned, because these are the people who voted to get rid of half of city council. Then you want to give, they want us to give them a hundred thousand so that they can draw the district lines to get rid of some of you all. I'm not, I'm not a district council person, but I have the expertise to know that if we give them a lawyer with a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, give them the opportunity to get the redistricting software, all of you who haven't done exactly what you've been told to do every day and every night, you will get jerked in redistricting, and the people who do what they say, they will get assisted in redistricting. So don't put anything in there related to redistricting until we specifically make a budget amendment in the future where we negotiate all the details of how this is done. If y'all give them that money, I'm not a district person, but I know what's gonna happen. And I, I'm just telling you, don't do it. And I'm an expert in this field. That's why there's eight black state reps and senators in Dover, from my redistricting expertise, starting in the nineties. That's why there's two blacks in, in, um, Newcastle County, from my redistricting expertise, coming up from the nineties through to the present. This is an area of my expertise. Do not give them a hundred thousand dollars, a lawyer and redistricting software and the ability to determine who's on the committee. Think about every committee that's ever been created since we've been here. It's been to not respect the large diverse minority presence on city council to make your power no power. So those are the two main things that I have a problem with. The third thing, and that is, is the gentleman still here from the budget office?
He is not.
Okay, I want the budget office to provide in writing how our budget can have the money separated by council member. Whatever amount of money is for each council member, whether they're able to separate that out in the budget, where one line says first district councilman and has the amount of money. Second district has the amount of money. The way that's written right now, I'm telling you all, everything that has happened with respect to the money, you've not had any input. Even when you voted and said what you wanted done with the money, they went and spent the money. So find out, and in fact, Greco, I ask him directly myself, because if we go through the staff or the people leading this finance and president's office, they will tell us what they want us to know. So I'm, I asked Greco directly myself, how can they draft up a budget for city council where each one of those dollar amounts that we're supposed to each get is specified in the budget itself? Because we, we don't have a trustworthy set of operations right now. And if you all don't believe it, where's your money from the last time we voted to divide it up equally? That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Guy. Uh, next up is Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Walsh, you still with us? Councilmember Walsh?
She, she's probably on mute.
I don't see her up there. Is she still there? All right, well, I'm gonna jump to Council. Councilmember Walsh, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead, and then from you, we'll be going to Councilmember Harley.
Okay, you can't hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Well, I, I'm sorry for doing exactly what I'm about to complain about. But I am so sick of council meetings and, and committee meetings being used for nothing but political propaganda. We've been sitting here since four o'clock doing all. We've been sitting here since four o'clock doing all of this. And all of a sudden, coming in at the last minute and once again, trying to play to an audience. And I, I feel like I'm listening to Donald Trump too, because there's not a subject in the world that Mr. Guy doesn't appear to be a self-compl, a, a self-announced expert on. And as somebody who was here during the last redistricting, he wasn't even in sight in the last redistricting in the city of Wilmington. He had nothing to do with it at all. But he is a perfect example of why outsiders need to do the redistricting so that politicians stay out of it. Because we should never, ever put these districts together where they would be safe for one candidate and not safe for another one. And that's all I have. Thank you right now.
All right, Councilmember Harley, are you going to ask the budget question?
Uh, yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, yes, we're talking about the, the redistricting and, and that's part of the budget. That's the budget line in the, the budget. And so I guess my, my thoughts are that I, I know this is something that needs to be done. And I guess I, I just want to make sure that if we end up getting a consultant that, that we are able to weigh in and be a part of that interview process. Because that whole redistricting topic is very, very important. And I think that having someone that is neutral and, and, and an expert, I think would definitely be of value and benefit to, to the council. Thank you.
I can tell you, Councilmember Harley, in twenty ten, the consultant did confer with, with all council members. And then the redistricting plan did go before Council Walsh.
Great.
Mr. Johnson, you're up?
Yeah, yes, in, in regard to the, uh, uh, legal council budget line, I do feel like that obviously can be revisited. We have to look at the weak fact numbers, we have to look at where the numbers are. But I know this has been a, a party for a long time. I mean, for someone, you know, I have a personal experience, I haven't been in Law Department. I understand how busy it is, and they've had their staff shrink. So simply, I believe, a lot of the issues that we deal with in council could be avoided, I think, by having legal counsel, full-time legal counsel. Now, if we can't do that, we have to shave it down. Maybe there's some kind of part-time contract position we can kind of offer again. Regardless, I do believe it's necessary, you know, a, a, all legislative bodies should or do have their own legal counsel, whether it's down in Dover or, or down in Washington DC. So I do feel like it's something that is often overlooked. But as we've seen time and time again, the questions that come up on how many votes you even need to pass a certain ordinance or resolution. That's important to be able to bounce it off of a dedicated legal staff. So that's my two cents in that regard. We can obviously, this is a shifting budget, but we have to look at those needs versus wants. So the census is again, something that we can revisit, maybe a pared-down version of it. But it's something we are unfortunately required to do by law. It's unfound, it unfunded mandate, so it's not an option. As Chairman Frill has talked about, we have to do this. So I, so I do believe we need to revisit those lines, some larger lines. Certainly, obviously shave where we can. But, you know, we, we do have a lot of costs, of course, associated with our station and communications. So we can look at maybe if there's some savings there. And I think we'll come to something, but I don't want us to overlook how important grounding in, 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 in legal counsel is. It's very important, because all the things we're going to go through, all the challenges we're going to go to in terms of recovery post-COVID, all that's going to require a big lift. And I, I, I can't overlook that enough. It is, this is what we're going through, there will be another side to it, and we have to be prepared and have the staff and dedicated talents around us to be able to execute July first on. So that's just what I'm saying is, is let's not jump to the legal counsel right away as, as something that needs to be cut. I think we need to look at the overall budget, look at our numbers, look at the revenue numbers, and then come to a sound decision with that. Obviously, community funds can also be navigated around. So, you know, there's a lot we can look at, but certainly legal counsel, we can't overlook that.
Thank you. President Shabazz.
And Mr. Chair, I'm up.
Sorry, we're not showing up on here, but go ahead, Councilmember Oliver, and then we'll go to President Shabazz. One of you have a short period of time left because we do want to open it up for public comment.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to just.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilmember Oliver, and then President Shabazz.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I just wanted to reiterate what Chris said, but it's already been in the workings. But I think it's common throughout the whole council members that we've been looking forward to legal representation for just the city council. So that has been an ongoing conversation for the last couple of years. And I think we, we tried something that worked a little in between. That point to be made is that I think City Council doesn't need, we need our own legal counsel. Just a good parliamentary, someone who, as you said, we can ask a question and they know the answer. And just strictly working for the City Council. So that's all I wanted to say, that, that's been an ongoing conversation, that's not a secret from from the staff, staff or from City Council members. I think all thirteen of us agree that we need some representation just for City Council. So I just wanted to reiterate that that has been a couple of year, two-year easy conversation.
President Shabazz.
Yes, real, real quickly, Mr. Chair, I, I just would like to reiterate to members of council that this is a proposed budget. It was one that we ran through, those members of council who came to the various meetings as we put this together. And those ish, those things that were presented was things that were somewhat, I will say agreed upon, but, you know, with not many major issues for members of councils as we prepared this proposed budget. But now that we've come up on COVID-19, we know that what we have proposed, we don't know what's coming. And so you, we are, that's which we opened up with comments that we know that we want to definitely have to cut back on the budget because we're going to need money, we don't know what our revenues are, we don't know where our expenses are going to be. So we welcome, you know, myself as president and, and I'm speaking on behalf of the chair in, in putting this budget forward, that we, that we welcome your input on any, any changes that we need to do and cutbacks and we can do for a budget. So all your questions and your points are well, very well taken. I hope that we all go back to the drawing board and come back again, and we can present a budget that is fiscally responsible. And, and even, I would like to say this to understand that even if we do get this budget passed in May, that this great possibilities as more revenue information and, and exact figures and needs of the city come in, we're going to have to do other budget amendments to address to that too. So everything is fluid right now, and we have to have that mindset when we are putting together this budget and we are proposing how we're going to operate the legislative branch of government. So I welcome all your comments, your input, and look forward to working with you to come with a budget that's feasible, that's reduced, and put money, more money so that we can provide the services that our citizens are going to need. And I look forward to your comments timely, as, as Chief of Staff stated by April fourteenth, with all of your comments so that we can do that and move on to continue to do the legislative work of the City Council. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Before I go to the next council member, I just want to say to any of the citizens that are, are participating, if you do want to make public comment, I'm going to need you to hit your raise, raise hand button so we know how many want to make comment. Councilmember Gray.
Yes, I just wanted to state that I spoke to Madam President about the hiring of an attorney, and she brought out that we would have a committee to interview, but the decision of the hire would be hers. And I definitely think that we need a dedicated attorney to the council. Thank you.
Alrighty. I don't see any more council hands. Does anyone from the public wish to make comments? This is the time to raise your hand. Okay, I would assume that you're just here to observe. And I just want to reiterate what some of you have said, what the Chief of Staff of the city stated. I'm re, I'm viewing this as almost like an acting budget in that we will pass a budget by the end of May. But we all know that we're going to be back here probably sometime in the fall, relooking at all the budgets, not just council, but throughout the city, and try to figure out how we're going to make up for the amount of lost revenue we're going to see, and also the increase in expenses that we're going to, we're going to see. So, you know, we'll do the best to pass a budget in May. I think we all have to be cognizant of the fact that we will be back here another time, working on this budget again. I did want to announce our next budget hearing is one week from tonight. And we will hear from the Wilmington Police Department and Wilmington Fire Department. And then on the following Monday, April twentieth, we will hear from License and Inspection and Real Estate and Housing. So this concludes our, our committee hearing for this evening. I appreciate all the participation from council members. I just want to make a statement on behalf of council that we appreciate all the work. The healthcare providers are giving us, the police, fire, and first responders, not just here in the city of Wilmington, but throughout the state and, and the country. I don't think they realize how much they are appreciated. Councilman Frill. I'm sorry, sir, we are, we are finished, and that concludes this session of Wilmington City Council's Finance and Economic Development Committee. Thank you all.